Good afternoon. We will call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, March 8, 2023, to order at 4:04 PM. We do have executive session today for roughly about an hour and a half. And Ms. Dalgo is back here. Welcome back, Ms. Dalgo.
Director Bankus.
Director Bankus will be joining us remotely in a few minutes.
Director Daniels.
Present.
Director Jorgensen.
Here.
Director Loma.
Director Loma is on his way and should be joining us in a few minutes.
Director Mal Packham.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Director Ott.
Here.
Okay, we have five board members in attendance. Director Loma will be joining us in person in a few minutes, and Director Bankus will be joining us remotely in a few minutes. Thank you. Secretary, not secretary, Treasurer Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing items F1 contract awards and F2 budget transfers appropriations and FTE approvals, as there are no contract awards or budget transfers appropriations and FTE approvals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I guess it's okay to call you the secretary, your interim secretary, you're filling in for Director Bankus. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Maricela.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Mal Packham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted as proposed. We do have executive sessions scheduled for 90 minutes today. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss negotiations per CRS 24-6-402 for E, Particular Matter Interest-Based Bargaining IVV with Colorado Springs Education Association, CSEA, meet and confer for educational support professionals, ESP, and executive professionals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Daniels.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen.
Aye.
Director Mal Packham.
Aye.
Director Nelson.
Aye.
Director Ott.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session now and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Okay, hi. Good evening to all of you. We are reconvening in public session, and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. That's a packed house that we have up here, lots of people in the room. Not only people, we have dogs in the boardroom, too. So for people that may be watching our live feeds, we have a few therapy dogs in the front row, and we have some more therapy dogs out there. So I guess the boardroom has gone to the dogs. I guess literally and figuratively, depending on how the evening goes. Several of our students here as well. It's always great to see our students engaged. It is the, I think today is officially the end of the third quarter, if I'm right. So students, you have the next couple of days off, so, which is great, since you can sleep in tomorrow, you can stay here till the end of the meeting, and, which is usually around little past 11 o'clock, so. And that way you get to see the board business and then elected body in action, so. And with that, understanding that there are a lot of humans and some dogs here, the clear expectation is that we are going to follow the board norms. And if you have one of the board agenda right in front of you, the board norms are printed on top up there. So my request to you is that we are respectful, courteous, and civil. The board is committed to the board norms that are printed on your board agenda for your reference and reminder, and those norms will be followed and enforced as far as expectation of professional decorum in the boardroom. Commander David Allison is back over there somewhere. David, can you wave your arm, hands up there? I'm talking to you, David. Oh, you can't hear me? I was just saying, that's our security guy out there, Commander David Allison. We call him the enforcer, but hopefully we don't have to use the enforcer tonight. So thank you. With that, let's start the evening. I'm glad we are seeing this type of engagement. I've always of the belief that I will take engagement of any kind as opposed to the opposite of engagement, which is apathy. And apathy is the absolute disease of public education, so we don't want apathy, we want engagement. So with that, we are going to move into the pledge of allegiance, and we have from Coronado High School, Linnea Waddell, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Thank you for leading us. And Ms. Dalgo, for the record, I want to note that a couple of audience members were seated during the pledge of allegiance. Moving on to awards and recognitions, Superintendent Call, I turn it over to you.
Yeah, it's really exciting to be superintendent of a district that so celebrates the arts. We have a couple of state-level awards to give out today. If I can get the students representing the middle school all-state choir and/or the staff that are here come forward, and we'll take a picture and give out some awards.
More than 30 D-11 students were selected for Middle School All-Star Choir. Students from Swiger, Jenkins, Russell, Saban, and Holmes were selected to represent the district at the upcoming Middle School All-State Choir Weekend. Each singer will participate in one of the three choirs at the festival, comprised of 7th and 8th graders from around the state. Singers were selected after auditioning with a prepared song and demonstration of vocal theory and skills. In addition, students were required to be recommended by their school vocal director, showing that they have the discipline and maturity to participate in this high-level music event. At the festival, performers will spend two days rehearsing and working with master choral directors to grow their vocal ensemble skills. At the end of the weekend, all ensembles will perform a concert at the Black Gold Theater at the Colorado Convention Center on March 10, 2023.
Actually, my name is Jeff Packham, and I'm the choir director at Palmer High School. I accept it on their behalf because they are preparing all of them to load a bus first thing in the morning to go to Middle School All-State in Denver. So they respectfully thank you very much, and I thank you as well.
And as all our middle school students progress on to high school, we have some state-level recognition for high school as well.
Twenty-one D-11 high school students participate in the 2023 All-State Choir. Students from Dougherty, Coronado, Palmer, and Seva were part of the select few that were chosen from across the state to perform in the annual All-State Choir Festival in Denver. Singers were required to be high school juniors or seniors and participate in their school vocal program. They were selected through a rigorous audition process, including medaling and rhythmic sight singing, scales, intervals, and a prepared vocal solo. At the festival, the singers rehearsed with master teachers in their vocal ensembles over three days. The festival's final day culminated with a performance at the Bull Theater showcasing their hard work, talent, and skills. The festival took place February 19 through the 11, 2023, in Denver.
All right, Maricela, keep it going. I think we're on to the thespians, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mitchell thespian troupe selected as Colorado's thespians February troupe spotlight. Under the direction of Lynn Goodwin-Witty, Mitchell High School thespian troupe, 2959, was selected to be the Colorado thespian spotlight troupe in February 2023. After submitting for the chance to be chosen for this honor, the 20-student troupe was selected because they demonstrated inclusivity, community, and excellence. Troops honored by the spotlight strive to positively impact the communities they live in. Mitchell's troupe has been reaching now to nearby community schools to educate them in theater further and spread their knowledge to younger students in the area. In addition to community building, the Mitchell thespians hope their troupe will inspire others around the state to find new ways to impact their communities. The troupe was highlighted on the Colorado thespian social media platforms in the February Colorado thespian newsletter.
Actually, if I remember right, the gentleman, you were the lead in the musical that happened at the, yeah, that's right, I met you at that time. It's good to see you.
Okay, so moving on from the performing arts, we're gonna go to sports. It was, I'm just gonna tell a little story here as we bring up, is Katie Valdez here to be celebrated as our state wrestling champion? And/or someone from Dougherty on her behalf? I think we're logged up, jammed up at the door there. And she's coming forward here, great, right now. As Ms. Valdez comes forward with her coach and the staff here, I just want to share with folks the importance of Title IX. It's only been three years since we've had girls wrestling as a state-stanctioned high school event, and we are proud to now have a state champion. I think all our parents will agree that ensuring that our daughters have the same equal rights and opportunities as our sons to extracurricular and sports is critical. As a father of a daughter, I saw how sports changed not only her engagement in school, but her outlook on life. And I think I heard the principal, Laura Lena, over there, tell me once that this is the toughest hundred pounds she's ever met in her life, so. Congratulations.
Dougherty wrestler wins CHSAA Girls Wrestling Champion title. Katie Valdez, wrestling for the Dougherty High School girls' team, has earned the Colorado State Championship in the 100-pound weight class. Katie started her wrestling career at Russell Middle School, where she won the city title against the boys. She is now a sophomore and attends an online school through another district, but she chooses to wrestle for Dougherty High School and is allowed to do so since she lives within D-11 boundaries. And her school doesn't offer sports. In addition to her state champion title, Katie is currently ranked seventh in the country in her weight class. 2023 is the third year of Colorado High School Activities Association sanctioning girls' wrestling. They now award individual state champions and a team state champion.
And reading your story, how you attended an online school, but you still participate in District 11 sports, that's exactly summarizes where we are. We accept and are inclusive of every student, no matter where they are in their K-12 educational journey, and provide opportunities for them to excel and thrive in our schools. Back to you, Superintendent Call.
Great. It is with great honor and privilege to bring forward our principal of Coronado High School, Darren Smith, to talk about what it means to be a Cougar as part of our school's spotlight. Darren, the floor is yours.
Well, come on over. I brought a team with me tonight, and so you're gonna be hearing from students, and we've got a robotics team with us. You can see our robot here. And so tonight, we're here to talk about Coronado and highlight the opportunities that we offer students. Founded in 1971, Coronado High School sits on the west side of Colorado Springs, just east of the Garden of the Gods National Landmark. We are steep in generational west-side traditions and practices that have helped create the quality of our high school. When you were on our campus, it's not uncommon for students, staff, or families to use the phrase "west side, best side." And so I say that in full disclosure, we love everyone, we love everybody, but that's just what we say. We will focus on the idea that we have and are building more capacity for opportunities for our students and staff as we evolve into a better 21st century learning institution. I've brought students from two of our somewhat off-the-radar classes, as well as our robotics leadership team to bring insight into what is happening at Coronado. So I want to start off by saying that we at Coronado are focusing on the D-11 graduate profile skills, the skills that build for the future. We have a robust advanced placement program and currently partner with the University of Denver, CSU-Pueblo, as well as UCCS, to offer a variety of college courses, and we plan to have a future partnership with Pike's Peak State College. This is a picture of our Core Composition 2 class, which is a partnership with CSU-Pueblo. So I'm gonna show you a few slides simply to give you a visual of all of the college classes that we offer in this realm. So you can see that at the University of Denver, we have a partnership, there's our UCCS partnership, and there's a reason I'm showing you all this, UCCS Continued, and then CSU-Pueblo. We have 27 college course offerings at Coronado for our students. Not only do we have a robust college set of offerings, we also have a strong career and technical education, or CTE, program. Between our construction, building, construction class, building a home in our parking lot, we also have a drones class, and we have several other offerings. Again, another visual for you, just want you to see the offerings. So one note to be made here, I think many of us may not know this, but, you know, you can see on this slide here, there's advanced placement, computer science. You know, advanced placement lives inside of CTE as well. It's not just a college offering, it does live inside of CTE. All the way down, I want you to note there are 39 CTE course offerings at Coronado, including our partnership with Odyssey. Coronado is known as a west-side community school with a strong performing arts program. The fall musical this year was the Christmas Carol. Our award-winning jazz and symphonic bands, orchestra, drama, and choir are all high-quality, high-level programs that push our students to be the best they can be. Our band and orchestra have performed at Carnegie Hall in New York City over the last few years, as shown in the bottom-right image of this slide. Athletically, our girls' volleyball team, boys' tennis team, and our boys' golf team were all league champions this past fall. Our boys' soccer team and boys' cross-country team were both league champions, as well as regional champions in the fall. Another bright spot for us this year has been our star testing data. We were above the district end-of-year goal of 50% student growth percentile in five out of six categories at the mid-year mark. There's more to come. The spring will be another bright spot for us, and I also look forward to our PSAT and SAT scores as well. As I stated in the introduction, another bright spot for us this year, as I stated in the introduction, I wanted you to hear from two of our lesser-known classes at Coronado. In the next two segments, we'll share a bit about these classes. First, let me introduce to you Anna Ferguson and Linnea Waddell to talk about Coronado's own in-house nonprofit class called Leadership for Nonprofits, or better known as Cougars' Care. And I know many of you know a little bit about, if not all of you, know about Cougars' Care, but maybe you didn't know that it was a class with credit.
Over the past 18 years, Cougars' Care has helped meet over 10,000 students' tangible needs, breaking barriers that could have prevented them from fully participating in their education. I'm Linnea Waddell.
Do I try to speak into here? Okay, sure. I am Anna Lucia Ferguson, and we are members of the Board of Directors at Coronado High School for Cougars' Care.
Cougars' Care is a student-run nonprofit organization that strives to meet the tangible needs of students, staff, and the community by offering food, clothing, and school supplies. We meet once a week to evaluate requests for support and discuss upcoming events like the clothing exchange or the Thanksgiving food distribution.
This year, we opened up the Cougars' Care Corner Market, which provides food for students, staff, and the community members. It is accessible to students and staff during the school day and accessible to the community on Thursday afternoons. We provide fresh produce, healthy snacks, and fridge and freezer goods.
Without Cougars' Care, students would go hungry, and they would lack the resources to fully participate in their education. Our impact includes helping students with college credit expenses and field trip fees, along with providing assistance for meaningful extracurricular activities like purchasing track shoes.
All of this is made possible through our Leadership for Nonprofits class. Leadership for Nonprofits is a journey designed to assist and train nonprofit leaders, or those who are aspiring to be nonprofit leaders in that sector, to develop abilities, build their current skills, and become more effective and successful leaders of nonprofit organizations.
With the block schedule, it is now possible to dedicate considerable time to an incredibly impactful class such as this one.
Thank you for your time in allowing us to speak to you guys about, in such a meaningful organization that impacts thousands, hundreds of people right in your backyard.
Now we would like to introduce Erin Gray, who will be talking.
Before you do that, can we do a shout-out? Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I saw you all as part of the Karen Share event at the Broadmoor, the annual event. Cougars' Care was highlighted in the video piece there, so it was great to see, and the shelves are very familiar. Yep. Come on up. Mike's hot, so it's all yours.
All right, I'm gonna give a shout-out to Mr. Urban, which is on your guys' left. The most admirable quality about Mr. Urban is that he sees students for as more than a grade. He doesn't see students as like, oh, that's the kid that failed my quiz last week. He sees that student as the student that comes to school every day and tries their hardest.
All right, and now I would like to introduce Erin Gray, who will be talking about our new outdoor science education class here at Coronado.
Hello, my name is Erin Gray. I'm a, thank you. I'm a student of Coronado's outdoor expeditionary science class. Today, I just wanted to highlight some of the activities we've been involved in, as well as what I've gained personally and academically from the opportunities that this class has given me. To start, we are a Riverwatch testing group, which means we are responsible for monitoring our assigned water site for compliance with the Clean Water Act. We sample and test the water each month and send our results to the state. And along with this, we're participating in the trout in the classroom, where we raise trout to eventually be released back into the environment to rehabilitate trout populations in Colorado. Both of these are examples of how we are learning while simultaneously becoming a part of something larger than us and helping our community. Along with this, we have gotten the opportunity to expand our environmental education in a hands-on manner with our trip last semester to the Fossil Ridge Wilderness and Black Canyon National Park, as well as our current trip right now in Arches National Park and Canyonlands in Utah. These are just an example of how we are able to expand our knowledge and come face-to-face with things that we hear about in the classroom. And because of our block schedule, we're also able to make an impact within our community as we volunteered many times with elementary school students to teach them about biodiversity and water conservation. And we were also able to conduct a cross-sectional biodiversity study within Colorado Springs because of our elongated class time. Personally, I've been extremely grateful for the opportunity to take this class because of its real-world connection and unconventional format. Instead of just learning information, we're more enticed to ask questions and hypothesize why things are happening. I believe this format is incredibly educationally valuable and is more encouraging of intellectual curiosity. There's not textbook answers to the questions that we're asking, and Mr. Ottmer is always there to help when he knows the answer, but also to encourage our curiosity. And I think it promotes a different relationship with school than I previously had, where I feel more internally driven to learn as well as externally. Thank you.
Side note, Mr. Ottmer and Mr. Urban are both with students right now near Moab doing a field study, and that's why they can't be here tonight.
I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Ottmer. He's an incredible teacher, and I tremendously appreciate his ability to create a unique and productive learning environment, as well as his consistent attitude of respect and equality towards each of his students.
We now have Carter Herman, Megan Morrow, Will Roder, and Kellen Steiner-Smith to highlight our first robotics team, 2996, better known as Cougars' Gone Wired.
Hello, I'm Carter Herman, the vice president of community outreach on the team.
My name's William Roder. I'm vice president of systems integration on the team.
I'm Kellen Steiner-Smith. I'm vice president of manipulator on the team.
And I'm Megan Morrow. I'm vice president of finance and chief financial officer of the team.
Coronado's robotics team, Cougars' Gone Wired, prepares us and all of our fellow students in it for the real world by teaching us important and unique skills that classes simply cannot. One of the biggest benefits being part of the team is the opportunity to engage in community outreach. As a team member, students go to different events and stem in our middle schools, elementary schools, and the community. The team provides an outlet for students to make a difference in the community and share their passion for STEM.
Another significant benefit of being on the robotics team is the opportunity to learn engineering and other technical skills, as well as apply the skills you learn in the classroom. While these types of, while the class, sorry. Specifically, the engineering programs offered at Coronado give us knowledge for these types of large-scale projects. Using and applying what we learn makes the education we gain significantly more of Using and applying what we learn makes the education we gain significantly more applicable. So, we have an Introduction to Engineering class, which teaches students how to sketch, design, and 3D model systems, which then leads into Principles of Engineering, which teaches students the math and different kinematics that go behind engineering. And then, we go into our Aerospace Engineering class, which gives students their first look into material science. Also, the aerospace class gives students a unique engineering challenge that they haven't experienced before. So, one of the best projects in that class is called the Glider Project, and students have to design a glider that launches with a rubber band to go as far as possible, giving students a real-life experience designing their own airplane. Our fourth engineering class is called Computer-Integrated Manufacturing. Me and Carter are both in that class, and it teaches us the essential skills we'll need to operate CNC mills and other computer numerically-controlled systems in the future. We use the CNC mills and stuff during robotics, as well as all the principles of engineering we learned, to create our competition robot with each and every year. Oh, yeah, Kellen's next.
Members have the chance to work with cutting-edge technologies such as CNC machines, Fusion 360, and a wide variety of power tools. Members collaborate with industry professionals to gain hands-on experience in design, prototyping, problem-solving, and perseverance. These skills are extremely valuable and cannot successfully be taught in classrooms.
So, additionally, being on the robotics team offers the chance to learn business skills. As members of the team, students are responsible for fundraising, marketing, and managing the team's resources. Students also learn how to pitch their ideas to potential sponsors, manage budgets, and communicate effectively with their other team members. These skills are highly transferable to future fields of education and employment and set all of our members up for success.
So, as part of our speech, we have a little demonstration of this year's competition robot. We just got back from our Utah Regional in Salt Lake City, where we placed fifth place out of the competition and won the Team Imagery Award.
Right. Woo! (Applause). Who wants to catch the cue? Anyone? Or has she been right out here? Here we go.
Yes, I'm, I'll catch it, but you gotta like game it over here.
Yeah. (Laughter). The robot in competition provides a unique aspect of learning that really cannot be
found anywhere else in high school. We experience many like things that are like challenging and difficult to go through, but we persevere, and it's a skill you really don't learn anywhere else.
It's the hardest fun you'll ever have.
The dogs in the front are checking it out, figuring out what's going on out there.
Shout-out is to our teacher and head coach, Bryce McLean. He is really the like hardest-working teacher I have ever had. He dedicates time after school every day and his whole Saturdays during build season to help mentor us and like teach us life skills that you really don't learn anywhere else, so big thank you to him.
I'd now like to introduce our Student Body President, Myla Wolf.
Hi, I'm Coronado's Student Body President. My name's Myla Wolf, and I'm a senior at Coronado. I also run Varsity Track, and I participated in varsity mock trial as an attorney. At Coronado, we believe in community, inclusion, and equality. In fact, these are the main goals that StuCo had this year. Luckily, due to our block schedule, we are able to be productive in every, in every class without being on a time crunch. I want to leave you guys today with a quote. Coming together is the beginning. Staying together is progress, and working together is success. Thank you.
Yeah, now we do Q&amp;A.
Yes, we do. So, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the students being here. How amazing is that robotics team and the competitions? And I've seen how much preparation, dedication, and commitment these students have. They are there during build season every single day from three, four o'clock after school ends till seven, eight o'clock, and then they work on the weekends. And then, quick thinking on their feet during the competition. And not only that, the word that I learnt when I was there, that Saturday when you got the, you know, competition rules and stuff like that, is it corroboration?
Cooperation.
Cooperation, yeah. So, they cooperate with each other, but they are in competition. So, they're always helping the other people that are there to. And Principal Smith, the student growth, middle-year, mid-year growth percentile, that looks promising out there. So, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. Any questions from board members? Director Nelson?
Just a comment and then a question. As far as the Cougar Pantry, is that the name of it? Did I get that right?
Corner Market.
Corner Market, thank you. I was looking back in the presentation, trying to find it, but I didn't get there. Just really inspiring to see our students stepping up and seeing there's needs in our community and that you guys want to take partnership, like partner with our community and other students, and that you're not relying on anybody else to fill that need, but you see the need and that you have chosen to step up and help provide for others. And I just want to say thank you for, for doing that. It's inspiring and just so encouraging to see young people with that ambition and that recognition of how important it is that we work together as a community to help take care of each other. So, thank you guys for doing that. And then, I had a quick question on the quote that, sorry, I can't remember your name now.
Myla.
Myla, who was it by? Do you know?
Henry Ford.
Thank you. It was a good one.
The man in the picture. I think that's Henry.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. I wrote down the hardest fun you'll ever have quote, and I also am writing that one down for, I have a list going of good quotes, so thank you guys for coming tonight and sharing.
Director Hart.
Thank you. This kind of follows up on Director Nelson's question about community, and so I'm wondering if each of you can, each of the two groups can address where your funding comes from.
This is her whole job, so.
Come on, I handed that to you.
So, our robotics team is funded by mainly our sponsors, and D11 is one of our sponsors. We also have a few more, like BPO Elks Lodge and Vertex, stuff like that. And then, of course, we pay for our, like us individually, sometimes we'll pay for our regionals, but most of our funding is from our wonderful, gracious sponsors, so.
Okay, I'll ask a follow-up, and then I want to hear from the Cougar Care Corner Market folks, too. Do you need donations? Would you welcome donations?
Absolutely.
Make a pitch here to everyone, both of you.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any sort of donation at all.
Where do they send the money, Megan?
Well, you would, if you have a check, you would address it to Coronado High School for the Robotics Department, and then, just, or you could always email, you know, one of us, and then we would connect you with our head coach. It's, yeah, you just basically contact Coronado High School for sponsorship.
Thanks. And the Corner Market folks?
Yeah, so we run on 100% donated funds. We don't receive funding from anything else. Actually, one of my other partners and I, we went to an, like a meeting called Couples Who Care at Garner the Gods Club, where basically a bunch of nonprofits come and they compete for their funds, basically. And we won, and we convinced them to donate an average of $10,000.
Wow.
So, yeah, we were 100% donations, and now we have that huge donation, and we're super proud of ourselves and really happy, so.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Just to add on to that, we also recently, earlier this year, partnered with the statewide nonprofit Karen Share, and they've been really instrumental in helping us get that corner market open. And although they don't like directly donate funds, we do get a lot of food donations from them that help us fill up that corner market, as well as just lots of generous community members, Rotary, lots of donations throughout the years that have made what Cougar's Care does possible.
Thank you.
So, I think you mentioned it. If people didn't hear, I think you guys also have that barbecue dinner where you raise, fundraise money, and you had that in October, November?
Yeah.
At the Elks, at the Elks Lodge. Yep. And I encourage board members, if you get that invitation, go and attend. And these kids, they certainly do have fun out there. It's a much bigger space where they can demonstrate their robots.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Drive serve around?
Yeah, that's what I saw. Director Loma.
Well, I was impressed, and I have this picture of your team. How many are there? There's about fifty, or what do you have there?
This year, we have around thirty members.
Thirty members.
I'm a senior, so my freshman year before COVID, we were around, before sixty then, but it's kind of smaller now because of trying to get back into the swing of things.
Yeah, I like the way you always use the word team, because it's a team effort, so it's really impressive. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
And just to piggyback on that, when you go back in that picture and look at it, there is a whole bunch of mentors that help these students out, including Director Hart's husband, who's involved in, as a mentor, helping coach this team. So, these kids perform and do an amazing job. When is your next competition? Dates?
So, our Colorado Regional in Denver is March 22nd, so we'll be heading out there.
Yeah, that's good.
That's coming up really quickly, and, but behind these kids, there is a whole bunch of team that also supports them, including parents and moms. They are there making dinners for them and having a community feel out there at Coronado if you go every day. And this is not just one day or two days. They do it every single day during the build season, which starts sometime in January. Is that what, yeah, and yeah, goes through all the way till April, so great program. Best wishes for all of you now. Go and get, win us some medals and come back with that. And then, Principal Smith, just to you, like, do you have an approximate enrollment projections for next year? How does that look for Coronado?
We're holding pretty steady. So, our projections are very similar to what we're seeing this year. So, yeah.
So, and so just for the record, that'll be the year, the first year that we choose to not lose students over the year. So, holding steady is a win. We last year projected over 800 kids lost in the system, and so we're asking our schools this year to hold the number of kids that they have, if not gain more. So, when Principal Smith says, "Hold steady," that's a big turnaround for where we would have been with previous projections.
Yeah, perfect. And, but what I gain from here, looking at all the educational opportunities that our kids have, and all the programs that you guys have, and all the classes that our kids can take, CTE classes, college credits that they can take, the opportunities are endless for our students out there. So, you said something about being the best in the West, I think.
Well, yes, our family, I don't say that, but our, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah, if you live on the West Side.
Competition is healthy. We'll just leave it at that. Competition is healthy.
If you live in the West, Coronado is the place to be, so I wish you the best and wish you all the students the best, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And making this presentation. Well, one final question I had for you. You were the one that talked about Mr. Ottmer, right?
Yes.
Is that trout webcam still going?
It is. You can go see it on the Coronado website.
Okay, we heard about that. I think we saw that out here, so I'm glad that you have that going and that outdoor program, too.
Thank you.
So, thanks to everyone from Coronado, and just the term that we came up with this year as we're rethinking secondary comes from an experience at Coronado on Veterans Day, where we came up with the term "Finding Your Excellence," that high schools should be finding your excellence, and here it is through experience. And so, what you see here, and these are just, just the tip of the iceberg of the opportunities that exist at Coronado and other high schools in District 11. And so, the idea here is that children are switching from direct instruction to competency-based demonstration of knowledge. If you're not, if you are not impressed by the students who came forward here today and how strongly and articulately they shared their passions for what their studies are, and hearing how the learning objectives that we've built in over the eight, 10, 12 years to get to this point are coming forward, then you're just not listening clearly. So, hats off to Coronado and to all our other high schools that are leaning in this direction. Thank you.
Okay, more fun. Superintendent's report. We'll get straight to our Getting Stuff Done Awards, GSDs. We want to do a little focus this, this board meeting on mental and behavioral health supports. We know that there are challenges out there for our students. We know that although we like to say COVID is over, COVID is an experience that our students are going to take with them for the rest of their lives, and we have to continue to provide the supports. The data is alarming, and not the District 11 data. The data across our country is alarming on the challenges that our students are facing daily. And so, we are very proud of this, of the supports that we have. We are just going wave-tops here, so I don't want anyone to feel like, whoa, you talked about that one school. We just, I asked my team to highlight the best and the brightest, but there are multipliers out there. These ideas and these programs are happening. But what I really want you to see is the creative way that the Colorado Springs School District 11 is choosing to solve what other districts are seeing as an unsolvable problem. There is a massive shortage in the United States for mental health professionals, bar none. There is a doubly massive shortage for mental health professionals in public institutions because of the pay differential. So, we have to recognize that we are thinking outside the box, we have strong employees and strong partners, and some of them four-legged as well. So, with that, I'll go through this. I actually see that you're here, Maddie, so can you stand up and everybody see you? This is Maddie Francis from Monroe Elementary School. She's a school counselor. And what Maddie's being recognized for is she brought in a program called IHT Heart率 Watches. And so, these watches are like Apple Watches, and instead of giving you email or social media, they measure your heart rate to tell you how your mood is changing so you can regulate your emotions. Any of us know that as we get nervous, we have a tendency for our heart rate to increase. So, blue, yellow, red, and kids are now in control of how they're feeling before maybe they manifest that feeling into a behavior or a disruption or their own challenge in how they're dealing with a situation. As an example, she had five fourth graders who wore the watches over four weeks, who were able to record and track their own cues, and during that time period, none of those students needed any additional behavioral supports. They were able to make their way through the day with just a daily check-in and their small group sessions. So, hats off to Maddie for getting it done. This is an incomplete picture of a very expansive team that we call our CARE Team. We have five district leads and then five team leads that help coordinate our counselor response for when we have tragedy. Yes, unfortunately, we are a district that deals with tragedy. Sometimes it can be in a public setting, and sometimes it can be private, but on a moment's notice, I can call Valerie Skates and Dawn Bowen, and they will have a team on-site and to be both there for students and for staff. And again, we provide these supports across all of our D11 community. Hats off to the CARE Team. They have unfortunately and fortunately had eight times that they've had to respond already this year alone, so hats off to them. Big round of applause. I'll keep the slide up here because they represent an extension of the rest of our team. We have, our average counselor-to-student ratio is 206 students per counselor, which is better than most districts in the region, but we know that it's not enough. It is lower in high schools, 160 students per counselor, but I think any one of us who's ever seen a mental health professional before would loathe to think that somebody's seen up to 160 patients in a day and that they really understand what our needs are. So, I really appreciate what our counselors do, but we have to be able to do more. And we do do more. I said "do do" just as the dog thing came up. So, these are pictures. This is an incomplete picture of a very expansive team that we call our care team. We have five district leads and then five team leads that help coordinate our counselor response for when we have tragedy. Yes, unfortunately, we are a district that deals with tragedy. Sometimes it can be in a public setting and sometimes it can be private, but on a moment's notice, I can call Valerie Skates and Dawn Bowen and they will have a team onsite and to be both there for students and for staff. And again, we provide these supports across all of our D11 community. Hats off to the care team. They have unfortunately and fortunately had eight times that they've had to respond already this year alone. So hats off to them. Big round of applause. I'll keep the slide up here because they represent an extension of the rest of our team. We have our average counselor to student ratio is 206 students per counselor, which is better than most districts in the region, but we know that it's not enough. It is lower in high schools, 160 students per counselor. But I think any one of us who's ever seen a mental health professional before would loathe to think that somebody's seen up to 160 patients in a day and that they really understand what our needs are. So I really appreciate what our counselors do, but we have to be able to do more. And we do do more. I said do do, just as the dog thing came up. So these are a picture of our therapy dogs. Anna and I'm sorry, what's Sarah, can you both stand up and walk around Sarah and Mac for a second? And so this is Tucker and Mac from Swigert Aerospace Academy, our middle school. And these two dogs are available on request and kind of just there all the time. And they are, they are representative of dozens of dogs that we have in many of our buildings and you can see pictures of them up here. And so students can, again, just walking down the hallway, if they need a little bit of a break, I promise you, if you pet a dog, you're going to feel better. So as we come into a charged evening of public comment, I ask for folks to take a minute and be celebrating how relaxing it is. And maybe we can get them those watches too, Maddie, for them to deescalate a little bit. But therapy dogs are an integral part of what happened in our buildings every day. I have two students that are going to come up and talk about their relationships with therapy dogs out at our Achieve Digital School as well. Come forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Shailen Verplank from Achieve Online. So pretty much every day is, every day is a struggle for everyone. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, when we come in person, it's always a great, it's always great to have these little guys around. And just you can notice a difference when you walk into your classroom and at the beginning, everyone's, everyone's going through their own things. And when they come in, they just immediately go towards the dogs and you can tell by the end, there's been a positive change and they just always help and always make your day brighter. And then also Ms. Kay makes, has a pretty much like an award system where so like some days where some, some of us are able to like go walk the dogs around the school or help her take them in and out of the building. So they just help a lot in our school.
What kind of dog?
King Charles Cavalier.
Just when I thought I saw everything, so.
So my name is Philip and I go to Achieve Online and my, my dog's name is Chaucer. And he really helps me a lot every time I go to school. He, he really changes me a lot. Like every time I take him for a walk or something, he really changes my mood a lot. And he's, he's one of a kind though. And yeah.
Oh, that's a joy. All right, I'm out.
He's taking the dog for a walk.
Whew, now I feel better. This spreads everywhere. As an example, at Queen Palmer, we actually have a partnership with, with an organization. They have six dogs at Queen Palmer Elementary School for our, for our students to be able and our partners are here today. So can, can we stand up? Can, go ahead, Christina.
I want to introduce Janie Fedora. She's our CSM counselor here at Queen Palmer and she's done an incredible job. So I want her to take a moment just to talk about that for a moment.
You can bend it up there too.
I feel really lucky when we started the, this partnership at the beginning of the year, I didn't expect it to go all year. It was just kind of a nice way to support emotional needs. One of our big goals for this year is supporting students' emotional regulation. And it's just something that has been so well received by our students and by our staff that so many of our students up there in the picture, it's so cool. They would think it was so cool to see themselves up there. They love having their time to read with the dogs. They gave me some pretty awesome feedback about how they feel about the dogs and it was as positive as we expected. So we just feel really lucky to have this partnership with all breeds and hope to continue it through the rest of the year. And then, you know, as far as, as far as it, as far as we can go to support emotional regulation for kids.
Great. Thank you so much. Continuing on the idea of partnership at Holmes Middle School, we have Colorado Motion and this is Nicole Navara and Tara Falsely. And what they're able to do is we, we had an unfilled vacancy, an unfilled position for mental health professional and the school is able to turn that FTE back in and then create a partnership. And now we have counselors available in the school who are doing 18 students are getting one-on-one supports. And so what's important here is when we can't solve the problem, how do we then take those dollars to realize that those dollars are there for the needs and services of our students and find the partners that can help us with that? So Holmes continues to be innovative. This is a summary slide of other partners that we have across the district and I'll just go around, you can follow me with the logos, Burning Sages Therapy. They do really strong work. They actually help us with parent academies that help develop the skills for our parents to understand how to deal with the behavioral and mental health needs for our students. They've just added four new therapists to hopefully be able to expand the number of schools that they're serving for us. Mindsights at Dougherty, Mann, Holmes and Freedom, they come one day a week and they're actually having the counselors help build some capacity of our own counselors as well as doing group sessions with students as well as individual student sessions. Then we have Thrive Works, which meets individually with students and they're at five of our schools. We have ITSCO, which is in the schools counselors. They have 50-minute individual sessions at eight of our schools. We have partners with the Children's Hospital that's at seven of our schools and Diversus Health at four, four of our different schools. And so it's just really important for everyone to understand that the school system is doing everything it can to pick up on the gap of what exists in private healthcare system. I'm very privileged to have had three children go through their own mental health struggles, but always get private healthcare through my own HMO. Many of our families don't have access to that high quality HMO. And so the schools are asked to pick it up. We are not funded in a way to match what an HMO can offer for families. And so the creative thinking of all of our staff members and in partnership with our community is helping to close that gap. I want to thank everybody for that and then just conclude to realize that we're not just talking about our students. There will be some conversations this evening on our health and benefits package, but as it currently exists, you can see, we have very strong mental health supports built in for our staff to take advantage of. And so we are not, we are certainly very student focused, but we know that it takes our staff's mental health to be able to get there as well in the end. Okay, that's it for our mental health focus today. I want to shift to what would have been two for Tuesdays on teachers, but it's now three for Tuesdays for teachers. And so the celebration here for Jason, Hannah and Brian and helping support Halbert Columbia and Russell Middle School. You can see these, they're available online. Just again, the idea of how important it is for us to celebrate the teachers and the work that they, they do every day on behalf of the needs of our students. It's a real celebration. A real shout out again to Human Resources. We've been talking for a couple of weeks now about getting stuff done, about advertising for positions. We have not only advertised, we have hired, ladies and gentlemen. If your name is on that list, please stand up because I know you're here in the audience. They're out there, they're coming in, they got to go bring them. So I'll read through here. Here they go. That's Naomi. She's been with us for a long time. We're happy for that too. So just, it's real exciting as we have new principals coming into the system. The ability to interview in February, advertise in January, interview in February and have people introduced in March to begin next school year means that we know that their heads are already turning. Please come forward. All the new hires come on forward. All the way up to the podium and everybody just introduce yourself. And if you brought a loved, a loved one or a spouse, family member, tell everybody who you are and where you're going to work. Great.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Brown and I'm excited to be the new assistant principal at Martinez Elementary. I brought people, oh, there they are. I was gonna say I brought people, but I wasn't sure that they made it in with me. So I brought my husband, Joe Brown, and my oldest, Maya Brown, and my youngest, Kason Brown, but my middle one wasn't able to come tonight. So thank you.
Great. Krista, go for it.
Hello, I'm Krista Parnell and I'm going to be the new principal of Palmer High School. I'm super excited. Go Terrars!
All right.
I brought with me my almost husband, Mitch, back there. So when you see me next fall, I'll be Burke instead of Parnell, but it's not because Parnell died or went away. Anyway, thank you, board. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Brian. I'm so excited to be here.
Great, thank you. A familiar face in Stephanie.
My name is Stephanie Atencio and I am the new principal at Columbia Elementary School. And I brought Carol Fry.
That's a great line. Come on over, Tammy.
Hi, good evening. I am Tammy Kruger and I will be the new principal at King Elementary next year. And my husband wanted to be here desperately, but he's at a school doing a Renaissance Festival. So, but he was a D11 employee and wants to say hi to all of you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron Hamilton. I am the new principal at West K8 and I'm here tonight with my wife Julie Hamilton, who's the art teacher at Halbert Elementary School. We are Westside for life. That's the two of us. So very proud to be a part of West going forward and to return to District 11. District 11 has been a part of my career for a long, long time and I'm really, really happy to be back. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, my name is Robin Moore and I will be the new principal at Edison Elementary come next fall. My husband Mike is here, holding my purse over there. And I'd just like to thank everybody and just bring the feeling of perseverance and sticking it out and believing in D11 and it pays off. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, a couple other names up there that weren't able to attend tonight, but we're certainly excited and we'll have them at the next board meeting, especially as we get through not all, actually all the members that are here tonight are in the personnel report. So, but we did make the final hire today for Deirdre to join us in special education. We're really excited about that, but it didn't make it into the report. Over to the hiring fairs real quick. We are still active. We are out there. We never rest. Myself and Tamra will be going up to UNC to their fair on March 23rd, 24th. It's time to put Colorado Springs back on the map in the state of Colorado. So we're going to go to the premier teacher education college in the state, UNC, and tell our story and ask people, why not join the heart of the city here in Colorado Springs? So we're super excited for that. Okay, I'm going to ad lib just a little bit. A couple of weeks ago, we did an executive cabinet meeting and we came together in kind of a team building on a stained glass piece. And we built this piece here, which is how we see our district. And you can see it has changing colors and changing shapes and we're, you know, not just red, we're all kinds of colors and we're moving in a very artistic and new direction. And what we decided is, is that we would share this amongst executive cabinet to the, to the executive member of our cabinet, our chief, chief of the month, chief of the quarter, whatever you'd like to call it. But I'm going to completely humiliate and embarrass Phoebe Bailey and ask her to come forward. Where is Phoebe? Phoebe, she was here. Phoebe, she never leaves. We don't see her. Well, I'll give her the public recognition. We asked a lot of human resources this year and we had a lot of feedback when I got here that human resources was challenged, but human resources has delivered. They have met early hiring. They have met great interview standards. We have committees, we have community members, we have students on those committees. And so here's hats off to Phoebe Bailey as our chief of the month. And I don't think she's here, but she's probably just hiding because she hates public recognition and to all her team. There's nothing quite like getting a call in the middle of the day from the governor. Anybody have the governor call them before? Well, neither had I until today. There we go. Thank you for those who've had it. Naomi. So this week, the governor, oh, here comes Chief Bailey. Get in here, Phoebe. See, I told you, you got to come forward. So Governor Paulus called me on, I guess that was Tuesday and said, hi, Superintendent Call, welcome to Colorado Springs. We're so happy to have you and congratulations to Chapita Elementary School and Roosevelt Charter Academy for being two of 12 schools in the state, two of 12 schools in the entire state to be awarded the governor's bright spot for math for having strong growth and achievement on CMAS from 2019 to 2022. So can I get, we'll do Chapita first. Sarah, you want to come forward? And if you brought anyone from your team, please.
Yeah, thank you. So I have here with me Lisa Morgan, who is one of my second grade teachers. Erin Holochek is a parent who's been, her eighth grader started in kindergarten. And Jamie Wright is our teaching and learning coach. And we're just really honored to get this award. Growth has always been challenging for us, but I really think when we look at that 2019 to 2022, our teams really worked to collaborate during the pandemic to dig in and make sure no matter where kids were learning, that we were meeting them, knowing our kids so that we could meet them where they were and really push and keep those high standards and expectations. So I'm just incredibly proud of our students and our staff.
Okay, Kate and Roosevelt, if you can come forward. I think it's just, I think it's wonderful that we're able to celebrate, you know, elementary school children at both the charter and the traditional district run schools. And just as we're getting ready for Kate to talk about her team at Roosevelt, this has been a very trying time in education and yet there are teachers, there are schools, there are students, there are families who found a way through to not only make it through, but to succeed during that time period. And so there is, there is opportunity for all of us. My team will be meeting in the next few weeks with both these schools to get those best practices. What's happening in these two schools that we didn't see happen consistently, not just through District 11, but throughout Al Paso County in the country? What was the focus and what was the ability to be able to be recognized for that amount of achievement and growth? So Kate, if you want to introduce your team?
Thank you. With me tonight, I brought some of my amazing teachers and teams. So Paula Bagueta is our business manager and helps run every part of the school, my right and left arm. Sandra Dam is our board president who supports us on all levels and we appreciate her. I have Ruby White, who is my fourth grade lead teacher and she is just a phenomenal instructor to all our students. I have Becky Dilla Huntie, who is our third grade lead teacher, again, a phenomenal instructor. And then Matt Cleland, who is one of my deans of students, who really supports our intervention in math, growing our students. And we're just super excited that we are recognized in this way and doing the best for kids. Thank you.
Congratulations to both Chapita and Roosevelt.
Great, and I hope the governor calls again soon.
I don't know if you mentioned that each of these schools also get $50,000.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. And part of that governor's award is $50,000 to each school.
To use it to keep improving our student outcomes.
Great. And as is traditional to the first superintendent's report of the month, Velvet, if you could come forward and go through the family, school and community partnerships update.
Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll go ahead and get going since I know you guys have a lot going tonight. So I'm getting, oh, did I do, oh, there we go. Sorry, I thought maybe I. So as part of the work of the D11 Family School Community Partnership Collaborative, we support schools, but we also want to celebrate the FSCP work done at our schools. And this month, I want to give a shout out to Natasha Grant, who is our engaged, family engagement coordinator, who daily reaches out to schools to help, with help from the district. Our FSCP Celebration Subcommittee, which includes Jennifer Schulte, Nancy Marshmello and myself, Velvet Steponik are here to celebrate the D11 schools. So once again, I just want to make sure you know, provide the definition for what FSCP is and remember that it is an active partner, the key is active partnering. Research indicates that family, school and community partnerships lead to improved student attendance, higher graduation rates and a deeper sense of belonging. And then I also want to remind you again, from the Colorado Department of Education has four essential elements for family, school, community partnerships, creating an inclusive culture, building trust in relationships, design capacity, building opportunities and dedicating necessary resources. We know every D11 school is working to provide opportunities for everyone to help launch student success. But as our collaborative, we want to celebrate some of the bright spots in our district. So this month, we're going to celebrate two schools. We want to highlight Stratton Elementary School and Adult and Family Education for their work to launch student success with FSCP. And we hope that you can see the work being done fits into the essential elements of FSCP. So I want to take opportunity, I know we invited Stratton and Adult and Family Education to come, so if those staffers could stand up and then we could clap for them, I don't know, hopefully. Stratton people there too. All right. First, we're going to talk. All right. First, we're going to talk about Stratton Elementary. My sister actually went to Stratton Elementary School a long time ago. Stratton Elementary School is located in the central area of D 11. And you, if you stand in the field right by there, you have a great view of Pike's Peak. It's a great location. Stratton consistently works to build community within the school and the neighborhood, and the teachers work hard to provide opportunities for students and families to come together outside of the classrooms. And so, we're going to celebrate what Stratton is doing today. So, first of all, the annual Community Turkey Day. A well-known tradition at Stratton happens every year when Stratton invites families and friends to come and enjoy a traditional Thanksgiving meal with students. What a great way to focus on being thankful with their community. Stratton also has a strong tradition of celebrating their family and community veterans with a breakfast and assembly every year. So, Stratton, why not reach out to the community during the holidays? McKenzie Place is a nearby senior facility to Stratton. Students and families walk to McKenzie Place, students sang carols for residents, and then they shared hot cocoa. And you can see from some of the pictures there, the fun that they had. Next, Stratton comes together every year to perform a spring musical. That doesn't happen that often at the elementary school level, but teachers, school staff, family, and community volunteers donate many hours of personal time in preparation for the school musical. Students in grades three through five audition for roles, practice from September through March, and then in April, perform two shows at Mann Middle School. So, I'm sure you should be watching for your invitation for that musical this year. Stratton also has a strong parent-teacher association that holds events for students and families throughout the school year. They help families and, they help connect families and build community at Stratton. So, actually, some of the tattoos in this picture, they, they hold dances like the Halloween dance, which is on the far side. They have a chocolate art night every year that's hosted by the art teacher, Mrs. Vassar, and the Stratton PTA. Families enjoy fun art activities while the PTA hosts a bake sale in the gym. An art auction features collaborative pieces from each classroom, and families can bid on the artwork. PTA also does monthly popcorn Fridays, skate nights, movie nights, and a school carnival in the spring. There are many other activities that Stratton does to build community and work together to launch student success. They also, they like partnering with facilitators to support opportunities for Native American and Alaska Native students and families. Thank you, Stratton, for your work on FSCP. So, why don't we go ahead and give Stratton a hand, a round of applause again? Our second bright spot is, is the Adult and Family Education. Adult and Family Education is located at the Roy J. Watson Academic Campus. And in the collaborative work that we've done in our, with our D 11 collaborative, we've met with a lot of other districts in the state, I shouldn't say a lot, several other districts in the state. So, I've had the opportunity to see some of the programs that other districts have. And when I come back here and I've looked at what Adult and Family Education does, I'm, I'm very impressed with what D 11 is doing. Did you realize that all the other districts in our area send their adults to our Adult and Family Education? We're, we're going to talk about the Family School Community Partnership work that they do, that they can all take advantage of, but it is a great program. The mission of Adult and Family Education is to provide quality educational experiences that equip all students for success as parents, citizens, and workers. So, we're bright spotting some of the FSCP work at, at the Adult Family Education, but all of their work is supporting families. The Family Literacy Center is designed to empower families by providing opportunities to increase adult literacy and improve parents' ability to support their children academically and developmentally while focusing on the child's parent as the first and most important teacher. Adult education students who live within the school district 11 boundaries have the option to participate in the Family Literacy Program, where they bring their children ages six weeks through fifth grade to school with them. While parents attend adult education classes, the children receive age-appropriate literacy instruction. Oh, did, sorry. I guess I, I didn't realize when I copied this that it had these things, these extra. So, I'm sorry. Family literacy is a four-pronged approach. Adult education, which is the bottom there, for almost 60 years, Adult and Family Education has provided English, English is the second language in adult basic education, GED prep classes for the adults in our community. The second, next prong is parent and child, that's not where we're going, sorry. We'll do this, whoops. I gotta go back. The next, in the upper, right there is the parent and child pact time. For 30 minutes during each class, teachers model and provide parents with literacy skills they can use at home with their children. And then, the children's education part. All educators use the Colorado Early Learning and Development Guidelines to plan lessons and track the growth of students' literacy skills. And finally, the parent, parent time, we talked about that one, parent time. Parents meet with our consultant from the Rocky Mountain Prevention Research Center to learn about practicing healthy eating and healthy lifestyles that promote physical and mental wellness. All right. In addition, some of our families receive monthly home visits from our parents as teachers' parent education. These visits provide a comprehensive approach to optimal early child development and a foundation for success in school and life. An example of some of the benefits of FSCP at the Adult and Family Education. Adult and Family Education is training and hiring their own students to become staff members and D 11 employees. Meet Ray Lee Diaz, the lead toddler teacher in the Family Literacy Program. She took the lead teaching position earlier this school year and has put her mark on the program with her creativity, love of celebrating diversity, and her devotion to working with our multilingual toddlers. She began her career in the Adult and Family Education Career Boost Child Development Associates Program. She finished her coursework, got a job working for Head Start, all while raising her three children. After several years teaching as a preschool assistant, Ray Lee joined the Adult and Family Education Team. And once she completes her CDA, CDA credential, Ray Lee plans to get certified to be as parents, as teachers, home visitor, like we talked about in the last slide. So, thank you to Ray Lee, and, and that's some of the power of, of being able to, to hire, you know, our own students. So, Adult and Family Education is an excellent example of, of all our four essential elements for FSCP from the Colorado Department of Education. If you want to know more about Adult and Family Education, look at the website. Come, go and visit the school. I, I think that not enough people really understand what's happening there. Thank you to Stratton Elementary and the Adult and Family Education for sharing the bright spots from their Family School Community Partnerships to launch student success. In addition to this presentation, we'll be presenting certificates at each school, and we look forward to celebrating bright spots from more schools next month at the board meeting. Thank you.
And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Superintendent Call. Looking at board members, do you have any comments, thoughts? Did you have something? Yes.
Just a question on the care team that you spoke about way early on in your presentation. Those are students, right?
No, those are, those are staff. Those are counselors in buildings and part of our central office staff.
They look so young. That means I'm getting old.
Yeah, otherwise known as our crisis response team, but we choose to use care as the way we enter the space.
The picture made them look like they were students to me. But I just wanted to make sure they were getting taken care of, especially if they were our students, that they were getting support for going out and reaching out. So, never mind.
Director Jorgensen.
Just a quick question for Velvet. Does the, the family education piece, do they offer, can you, is this on? You guys hear me very well? Do they offer supports, like emotional supports to parents? We've all been there as, as moms and dads who are just almost at our wits end of going, I just need a break. Do they, do we offer supports like that for, for parents that they could reach out to?
So, I brought my friend to help because she knows. They, they know the answer.
Hi, my name is Rosanna Zarniki. It's nice to see you. Thank you for spotlighting. And I am a program specialist with Big League Literacy. We, that's a great question. And our parents, our teachers are trained to provide, really, during that pact time, we offer extensive support in providing literacy strategies that the parents can take home. But we have a community advocate who is not here tonight because she is working with our families tonight, with also our teacher who has spotlighted Ray Lee there with our parents right now. She is an incredible asset to our team, and she provides a lot of bridging, she bridges a lot of community resources and brings them to our families and parents. So, we provide it in that way. I think that one of the biggest gaps that we have is parents being able to access the resources and knowing what resources, resources are out there. And so, that is one of the things that we really focus on.
Yeah, I think that's probably half the battle of just saying, hey, we have this resource available for you, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's great that you guys are there.
One other thing, I think, parents as teachers, which is a nationally recognized model for home visitation. When our staff members go into the home, you know, they're in their child's environment, and they're seeing firsthand how they can support that environment. So, I would say that is a very powerful piece in helping our parents understand how they can in the home, change the environment, bring in resources. And so, I would say that is another way that we support that.
Thank you for mentioning that, because I've been to few students' homes back when I taught, and I've talked to teachers in our district who have been to students' homes. And we don't really realize some of the situations that our students are trying to manage all of their things in. And so, that is a wonderful piece that we can see that and try to respond. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Daniels.
Thank you. I also wanted to just pull out that the Adult and Family Education Program has been around for over 60 years. So, thank you, close to 60. Thank you, Director Burkhardt Shields, right? This, this program is not new. It has not been, I guess, understood as it's been said. But please make sure that you know, they have been in the center of Colorado Springs for almost 60 years. So, this conversation isn't new. It's been around for a very long time. And they have been working in the center of parent-student relationships for years. And I want to applaud you for that, and I'm so grateful for the, for the work you do. I've watched you, I've been a part of you, and I'm grateful that we're celebrating the hard work that you do, day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further, no further board member comments or questions. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comments. So, just going over some of the board protocol. First and foremost, I want to remind the community that board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the district. And as highlighted in the board norms and the board priorities, the board is very interested in building trust and transparency by listening to community feedback as it helps us better do our work. The clear expectation is that this feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to personal attacks and disparaging remarks. So, please, please be respectful of everyone, board members, staff, and audience, and maintain the expected decorum in the boardroom. It is preferred that you do not single out any one person in your comments, but if you choose to do so, the, if you choose to do so, the expectations are that you will address them respectfully. Each of you have three minutes for your comment. A clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that. Please monitor the clock as you can get, so you get through your comments in those three minutes. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking, or use a silent applause. The statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board of the district. Okay? And a couple other things I want to let you know. We have a one-hour time limit for public comments. I have several comments, and this is certainly going to go well past that one-hour time limit. Some of you have signed up multiple times under action or non-action, agenda items or general items. I'm going to call your name once, just to be fair that we can hear from everyone in here. Students go first, and they get the first 10 minutes, and then we will go in an orderly manner in action, non-action, and general comments. And as I was looking through it, some of you, under action, agenda items, if you look at the board agenda today, there are two action, agenda items, which is two resolutions. One is Diversity in Education Month and the Military, Military Child Month, resolution for the Military Child. Some of the general comments, people have signed up under actions. So, the board does not have, I know that there was some discussion from the board diars a few weeks back on the pronoun policy, and there was a rally out there, and I appreciate all the people that turned up. The board does not have the pronouns as an agenda item today. We are not going to be discussing that. We are not taking any action on that item. So, if you signed up under action, agenda item, I'm not going to be calling your name because that's not an action, agenda item. Okay? If you are signed up under action or non-action, agenda items, please, the comments that you make has to pertain to the action or non-action, agenda items. And the other people who signed up in the wrong spots, I will move you under general comments and call you accordingly. Hopefully, that provided some clarity. With that, our first student, Michelangelo Crusen. And as a student, if you're coming up, please identify your name, the school that you attend, and the grade before you start speaking. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelangelo Crusen. I am a freshman at Palmer High School, and I am here to speak about the names and pronoun rule. Rules are typically made for one of two reasons, either to help people or to keep them safe. Who does this rule on pronouns and names help? Who does it keep safe? This proposed rule will harm all students, staff, and faculty of District 11. Not only those you think this rules against, but also people with unisex names, people with hard-to-pennounce names, and kids with common names, as well as many, many more. I know cisgender people who have had to correct people on their pronouns due to having unisex names. Everyone in District 11 stands to be negatively affected by this rule. It will divide the District 11 community. Division is absolutely the heart of this matter. We live in a country that prides itself on a fundamental principle. We said it at the beginning of this meeting. We live in a country that stands for liberty and justice for all. The history of this great nation has unfortunately, in its past, seen the marginalization and sometimes outright persecution of various minorities. But each time, every single time, the realization was made on some level that those words ring true. Liberty and justice for all. And those minorities began to enjoy at least some semblance of equality and mutual respect. More work surely needs to be done, but at least it started somewhere. Now, the transgender community is facing that same fight, that same hatred, that same distrust that other minorities had to rally against in our past to gain their equality. We are not broken, we are not lesser individuals, and we are not meant to be hidden away. We are meant to stand proudly in a country that holds itself out as a shining example of what those words truly mean. Liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you to all those who listened today, to all those who've had to fight in the past, and thank you to those who look forward to a future where transgender people are equal. Thank you.
Please, hold your applause. Thank you. The next student, Emma (Nicol Kurns). Again, introduce yourself and the school that you attend.
Okay. So, I want to start by saying I'm Nicole Kurns. I'm a junior at Doerty High School, and I go by she, they pronouns. So, what are pronouns exactly? Pronouns are whatever lets people know that the unnecessary pressure to be, to act, look, think, and perform like a woman or a man isn't solidified, is a non-binary. Blue and pink, colors labeled onto female and male, colors said to be feminine or masculine. Stepping into the mold, outside of the mold, feeling pretty in dresses but sometimes not wanting to twirl. Liking nails but sometimes not wanting to paint them, they, she. Feeling masculine but not always wanting chopped hair, wanting to evolve, to dance, to sing, to wear jewelry, to be you. They, he. Feeling womanly, painting your nails but biologically something else, wearing sweats and not caring your appearance to others. She, her. He, him. Gender neutral, gender inclusive, we are we, I am you, you are me. The feeling of being heard, of being appreciated, defended against the odds of high school is nothing but relief. Nothing but the feeling of security, the freedom to learn rather than worry about our safety. The understatement of the century, the understatement of no security- The understatement of the century, the understatement of no security in school in a district full of people who seem set against you. Where do we draw the line of protecting our students? There are six teachers I trust, four of which are my class teachers, three of which I feel safe talking to, and all six of which ask my pronouns. All six of which are inclusive and all six I feel would defend me. As of this year, I have been verbally harassed six times, all on the property of my high school. This is why. This is why the recognition is so important. This is why the safety and protection of our students is what import, what is important. And to build safety, we have to build community. But that can be limited when they don't ask, because when they don't ask, we don't know, don't know if we're supported, don't know who to trust. And when we don't know, we feel intimidated, alarmed, ignored, and overlooked, uncomfortable and unseen. Identifying simple problems before they become major, marching in circles and getting nowhere. But we need progression, not regression nor oppression. So, sorry for the digression and I don't want to come on with aggression, but to get progression, we need self-expression. We need our student voices heard, lines between inclusion and toleration blurred. So, I just few words till they get heard. Our preferred identity is locked up like the next-door neighbor's Wi-Fi password. So, how can I reword this for understanding? To stop going on herds, maybe afterward we'll see our, the differences that our efforts cause, maybe not. But we need to get our opinions voiced, as if we have a choice after this day, we need to feel comfortable, we need to feel safe to learn. So, please take this into concern and return to your rooms and in a day return, hopefully in good turn. To have a future where the students' opinions matter, where the ones who this change affects matters, not the people who stand against us. So, as a community, we put our trust in you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next student, Ren Fortier.
Hello there, my name is Ren Fortier. I am a proud senior at Coronado High School. Hello esteemed members of the board and those who may be defined as otherwise. I appreciate that you put Coronado in the spotlight tonight, one reason that I feel all the more reason to speak here. I was just honored for being a part of Colorado's All-State Choir and I will be returning in two weeks to be honored for receiving a superior at Colorado's Thesbian Convention. I would have never felt brave enough to begin asking others to use different pronouns for me if my teachers had not cared enough to ask. And I'll tell you what, I've been so much happier now that more of my friends and more of my teachers are using my preferred pronouns to refer to me. This new proposition to prohibit teachers from asking students their preferred pronouns is an egregious disrespect to students and their comfort in their schools. Additionally, this is all happening hardly, if not even, a year after Vice President Jason Jorgensen and Director Al Loma were called out for transphobia and general inappropriateness and hate in regards to students and their preferences. If you choose to pass this proposal, you are saying once and for all that you truly do not care about all students and their comfort and safety in your schools. You are telling the students and parents of this district that you want to close the door of mutual respect for mutual benefit and you are telling us you do not want us to feel welcomed. An unsafe environment is an environment where students will not learn or achieve, which you claim to be the top priority. Asking someone's pronouns is a matter of respect. It is not a breach of privacy. My pronouns are your business. And so, I would like to ask a question of two board members in particular. Ms. Jorgensen, if you feel it is so unnecessary to ask how someone wishes to be referred to, would you feel disrespected if I were to refer to you as a woman? Use she/her pronouns for you, call you ma'am, miss, or anything of the like. And Ms. Loma, you say you can tell what someone is. For one, what are you using to tell? Because most things that you would use to tell are not welcome for you to use in any way, shape, or form. My face and my voice are welcome for you to use to decide what I am. And my appearance, I wear men's pants, full covering clothing, boots and sneakers, I rarely wear heels, I keep my hair short and I wear it down. So, I ask of you, what am I? What are my pronouns? Go ahead and guess. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's the end of student comments. Appreciate the students being here. Moving on to action item, I have Joel Sorenson.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joel Sorenson. I'm a D-11 resident and I want to speak this evening on the action item about diversity in education and provide an alternative perspective on the issue transpiring this evening. I'd like to read an excerpt of an op-ed written by a freshman high school student published yesterday in the Colorado Springs Gazette. "I'm a high school student in D-11 and I support, and I am in support of this policy and grateful to Director Jorgensen for proposing it," referring to the pronoun policy. "K through 12 is a time when most students are wrestling with their identity. For many, that struggle includes gender. It's nothing short of callous and cruel to force a student struggling with the question of their, of her gender identity to out herself in front of her friends by demanding that she, along with anyone else in the classroom, announce her preferred pronouns. Maybe that student isn't comfortable giving an answer, maybe she doesn't know what to say. At the February twenty-six, twenty-second board meeting, several retired and current teachers spoke out in favor of the policy. One teacher said that he once had a young girl approach him and ask him if she looked like a girl. He answered yes. She was disappointed in his answer and wanted to appear to be a boy. A couple of years later, she told him that she had wanted to appear to be a boy at the time because she was having a hard time with her mom and didn't want to be like her. The teacher asked the board what would have happened had she not said yes. Maybe it would have led this young girl down a road that she would later deeply regret. If a student wishes to express her preferred pronouns to her teacher, she is more than welcome to do so," which Director Jorgensen has explicitly stated. "But asking everyone in the classroom to give an answer can create turmoil in a student's life that our teachers shouldn't be guilty of creating. An added issue with, with asking every student their pronouns is that it introduces an emotionally wrought political issue into the classroom. Not all students or teachers believe the same thing about gender. Some believe it is a social construct, others believe it reflects biological facts. Students who fall in the latter category also deserve privacy." Asking a student who holds a traditional view of gender for her preferred pronouns forces her to choose between publicly affirming the teacher's worldview by answering his question or refusing the question and alienating her teacher and perhaps her peers as well. For some teachers, forcing that moral and political dilemma might be the entire point of the exercise. While surely certain teachers ask the question in good faith with the intention of respecting their transgender students, others ask their classes, their classes for pronouns to make a demand that students affirm a worldview where gender is fluid and a matter of choice. This is not a consensus issue and asking teachers to just leave the issue out of the classroom is the most respectful thing. Oh, thanks, sorry.
Thank you. And I want to remind the audience, please do not approach the podium without talking to our security up there. And I also want to remind the audience, stick to the action item that we are talking about. So, I did not want to disrupt at that time. So, Mr. Shawn Walls, next.
How's it going, guys? Here we are again. You know, I didn't, I don't really know exactly what I, what it is that I want to say here. I had a whole bunch of stuff written, but you know, I just want us to look at ourselves. You know, with all, these babies, they were up here showing the robots and all their great achievements that they've done. And we got people outside the district building with guns. That, that's, that's the reality of, of life right now in District 11. You know, this is a dumpster fire. You know, it's really, really, really shameful. So, I ask, you know, what, what are we really talking about? Are we talking about like protecting our kids from being called something they don't want to be called? Are we, are we just, are we talking about stopping someone from being called what they want to be called? What's the real discussion here? What's the, what's the boogeyman in the room? You know, you, you know why bees attack? When you get too close to their hive? It's because they know that their homes are weak. You could just pinch them. So, they gotta get out and they gotta attack you first before you get to their home. And you know, these kind of things right here, it shows a weakness in our people, in our community, where we have to control people to make ourselves feel superior or better or what? I don't, what is it that we're competing for? There was a quote by John Clark. He said, "To control people, you must first control what they think about themselves and how they regard them, their history and culture. And when as their conqueror you make them ashamed of who they are, their culture and history, you don't need a prison walls or chains to contain them." And that's what it's about, I believe. I believe it's about containment. It's about containment. Because, see, nothing great can happen with hate. And the people that are hateful, they know this. You know this, Jorgensen. Loma, you know this.
Again, please respectfully address the-
Oh, respectfully, Jorgensen and respectfully, Loma. You know this.
Okay. Director Jorgensen and Director Loma, that is. If you don't want to address that, then you can take a seat.
All right, yeah, I got my time, hold on.
Okay, thank you.
So, and you know these things happen. And so, you know, we incubate hate. You know, not even four months ago, a psycho walked in the club queue and tried to kill everybody in the room. You know, the city council, the city government, they, they allowed that hate to be incubated until it burst, to this point where this person decided that he was going to eliminate some threat, that he was going to jump out and attack. You gonna be happy when that happens?
Okay, thank you. Your time is up.
Because it, because when it does, there's gonna be blood on your hands.
Your time is up.
And when there's blood on your hands, you're not gonna be able to wash it off or take care of it with, by doing other things. Don't touch me, brother.
Your time is up.
So, listen, I'm telling you this, man.
Can you turn the microphone off?
Protect our kids or you're gonna have a problem.
Marcel, can you turn the microphone off? Thank you. Okay. Okay. Again, there is no applause and I'm going to make a reminder again, the action agenda items are supposed to be talked about, the two resolutions that are at hand. And I let each one of those go. If you want to come and talk about the pronouns, I'm going to cut you off. That's not an action agenda item, okay? You will come again and talk during the general comments. I let one go on each side. Address the audience respectfully. If you are going to applaud, our security is going to watch and you are also going to be removed. Thank you. The next comment is from Mr. Robert Watson. So, please, hi, Director, Mr. Watson, your comment is going to be on the two, two resolutions that are there.
Consent item from the last forty minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Mopakum.
Okay. Yep.
Guess that would help, wouldn't it?
Thanks, go.
Dr. Mopakum, directors, Mr. Gao. I'm Rob Watson, library technology educator at Audubon Elementary School and the CSCA Bargaining Team Chair. There's been a lot of bellyaching about the calendar this year and how the board had to hurry up and adopt one because people wanted to plan their vacations. That's not the most convincing rationale, but okay. Some details got left out of the story and I thought that people might want to know. Just as we'd been telling management since October, the board could move ahead with adding two days because they had already been bargained in Article 14 years ago. In fact, when the board finally decided to adopt the calendar with the two additional days, they cited the master agreement, Article 14. Some kept proclaiming that the master agreement got in the way. But it actually gave you guys, the board, the authority to get what you wanted, as we said months ago. Of course, that section also expects economic conditions that can support the addition. We are glad the board has identified that it has the funds to cover cost of living, steps and lanes, and which are the basics of employee compensation. Allocating money to adding time at work but not meeting increases in the cost of living would be a dubious decision. In fact, we are not ready to agree to a separate memorandum that releases money to increase the work year when employees' pay is effectively going down at the cost, as the cost of living goes up. We can't in good conscience bargain for being paid less for more work. It is welcome that the board is committing to the negotiated conditions of expected, or of extending the calendar. As for joint counsel, the calendar was not brought to the meeting for a vote and bringing a calendar that had more days in the contract than the contract currently has, well, that would have been unworkable and we would have been voting against the contract that we bargained for. The board's hesitation in committing to the two negotiated days did create a delay, but we remain pleased that at the end, they moved ahead with that commitment. I hope that completing the picture helps people understand the full situation. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. I just want to remind again, we are just trying to conduct the board business in an orderly manner. And our three students that spoke right at the very beginning, they set a high standard and a high bar. I'm sure we as adults can rise up to that same level of expectations our students set.
Good evening, Superintendent Gao, board members and community. April has been designated month of the Military Child. I'm here to support the D-11 resolution to recognize month of the Military Child. Colorado Springs is considered a military town and hence includes many military families. As a widow of a veteran who passed away during a training exercise in North Carolina, I never realized how important it was to be prepared if I had to move to another state. I have lived in many different states that have military bases. I worked as a Child Development Assistant Director and as a Youth Center Director at Kirtland Air Force Base in New Mexico. I observed many troops that were deployed to the Middle East during the Gulf War, having to leave behind their loved ones. Many children were left in our care and as the Assistant Director of the Child Development Center, we were assigned to find resources for the families of the deployed troops. We had a very close relationship with family advocacy on the base. Many children, especially the older ones, had a difficult time adjusting to seeing parents deployed. Many of our military children undergo emotional and mental distress in which they demonstrate feelings of frustration and anguish that can possibly lead to behavior problems. Many military children are consistently transitioning from one school to another when parents had to move to another state or were being deployed unexpectedly, causing them to start all over again making new friends, not knowing if their credits will transfer to the new school, and also trying to fit in within the school community. There are many activities that can be implemented in schools to help celebrate month of the Military Child. This includes wearing the color purple, posted on the school calendar every Friday or each week in April. Highlight military families in the month of April, either weekly or daily on the school calendar. Post pictures of students from military families on a backdrop of the U.S. flag unique to their branch of service. These are just a few ideas. I'm providing you with a list of fifty ideas that can be selected by our district to celebrate month of the Military Child. I, I gave it to Maricela so she can go ahead and send it to you guys. You can also go to the Military Child Education Coalition via their website, www.militarychild.org, for additional resources and activities. Thank you for supporting month of the Military Child in April.
Thank you.
Hello, board. In honor of Diversity in Education Month, diversity is what has made America great. When we have and share different points of view, different cultures, different faiths, everyone benefits. With diversity of thoughts, many ideas are discussed and the best can rise to the top. This is what allowed America to prosper. In the diversity of culture, the best foods and dances can become a part of popular culture. What would life be like without tacos and pizza after all? What would Dancing with the Stars be without zumba and merengue? When my kids were teenagers, we sponsored a refugee family from Africa. We each learned so much from one another, a true- We each learned so much from one another, a true cross-cultural experience right here in Colorado Springs. As Americans, we love diversity, and I'm worried that the more recent definition of diversity categorizes us by our immutable characteristics, and that will just further divide our communities. I'm worried we are losing our diversity of thought, as 75% of Americans say they self-censor. Our thoughts are the only thing we possess that cannot be taken away. I worry that name-calling, bullying, and cancel culture will prevent the best ideas from rising to the top. I worry about our community and the kids growing up in this atmosphere. I'm not sure when the self-censoring began, but I do remember the political correctness, or PC, of the 90s. Now we have PC on steroids. Can we focus on appreciating our diversity without making our differences larger than what unites us? In education, we have moved to stop labeling students. Can the adults do the same? Can we stop demanding compliance to our personal point of view? Reasonable people can disagree without name-calling and demanding compliance. Let's honor Martin Luther King's wish and stop judging people by the color of their skin, and I'll add other immutable characteristics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, just have a question. You said we could only testify once. I'm not going to talk about pronouns, but I was signed up to testify twice, so just seeing what I should do.
Did I call your name?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about diversity resolution?
Yes, but you said we should only testify once, so should I?
Well, you would talk about the diversity resolution here. Okay, not about the pronouns. If you want to talk about the pronouns, I can call you back.
I also want to talk about the survey policy on non-action.
I can bring you back. I can call your name. Would you rather talk about the survey policy?
Do I just choose one?
Yes.
I'll wait till the survey policy.
Okay, sounds good. I'll call you back. Thank you. Rebecca Kelty. Rebecca Kelty. Okay. Oh. Ms. Ashby, is Rebecca Kelty in the overflow room? Okay, I will try to give you this. Jim Robertson. Jim Robertson. Okay. If we can get Rebecca Kelty, if she's there.
Okay, so I'm also a little confused because I'm talking about the pronouns as well.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll call you back.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm going to go to the non-action item now, which is about surveys. The agenda items under non-action, we have policies and we also have the health insurance coming up out there. So those are the things that you would talk about, the policies relating to surveys, not pronouns. And there are some other policies if you look at the non-action agenda item. Laura Sawyer's. Cheryl Saylor. And Rhonda Heschel is up next, just to let you know. Okay, you are here.
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Gao. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, bless our board and our staff for all their hard work for the benefit of our children. As always, we pray for your guidance in doing your will. Please keep us focused on our mission, the children. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I want to address the surveys being administered in D-11 as discussed at the board work session last Wednesday. Superintendent Gao, I know you like your data, and I agree that data has its place. My concerns are around how we are getting it, using it, and at what cost. I've reviewed the sample questions I could access regarding the Panorama Survey. As a reminder to parents, this is not an anonymous survey. Your child's name is attached to this survey. It's an invasion of privacy, in my opinion. Respect for privacy of the student and the family should be paramount, and is not with this survey. An example of one of the survey topics is five questions focused on how hard the student tries to understand and figure out what their teachers are thinking and feeling. No offense to our wonderful teachers, who I love and respect, yet why would we want our children spending time in the classroom trying to figure that out? That brings me to the point that having used this survey since 2018, the data has apparently not been used for anything beneficial in D-11. As Director Loma pointed out, nothing has improved, no changes have been made. Yet, how much are we spending to use the survey, and how much personnel time is used to administer, evaluate, and analyze the data? We haven't seen that information. Our teachers should be engaged enough with their students on a daily basis to be able to address most of the issues covered by this survey. They know what their students need and what resources are required, and if according to all of the UIP reports, there is strong communication and collaboration between teachers and principals, they have all they need to request appropriate resources at their schools. I propose we eliminate this survey entirely and opt out of giving the Healthy Kids Survey. Many of the questions on the Healthy Kids Survey are, again, an invasion of privacy. Often, questions are just plain offensive. Starting at age 10, out of 100 questions, three ask about gender identity, seven are sexual questions, 11 about smoking, eight drinking, nine marijuana, and three suicide questions. The only question asking a student about their mental health was relative to COVID, so barely relevant. At the very least, parents should be emailed the questions for any surveys well beforehand and given the chance to opt in, but in reality, I would like to see at least these two surveys go away entirely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Rhonda Heschel. Ms. Ashby, was Laura Sawyer's there? She's not there. And Rebecca Kelty? Is she there? Rebecca left. Okay, thank you. Ms. Heschel.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Heschel, and I'm a Coronado parent and a pediatric nurse practitioner, and my pronouns are she, her, hers. I just want to say how proud I am of the Coronado students. They were amazing. My son's a junior at Coronado, and it's a fantastic school. I'm so proud of it. But I'm here tonight to share my concerns about revisions to District 11's policy on research projects, studies, experiments, and surveys. This change in this policy will change participation in surveys from one of passive consent while providing opportunities for students and families to opt out to one that requires students and families to opt in. My specific concern relates to the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, which is given to students in public schools across the state once every two years. The Healthy Kids Colorado Survey is a needs assessment, so the entire purpose of the survey is to determine what students need so that schools and other agencies will know how to best target programs and interventions for our students. As a healthcare provider, this survey helps inform my practice. A few years ago, I went to a continuing education program on substance use and learned that kids are dabbing. I had no idea what dabbing was, and the survey showed that it was increasing. So none of us can help kids effectively if we don't know what they're doing. Anonymous surveys, such as the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, help gather this data that we need to support kids in our community. I found one part of the revised survey document especially surprising. It states, "Prior written consent is required before a student shall be given a survey that reveals information concerning," and under number two, it said, "mental and psychological problems that are potentially embarrassing to the student or family." Why are mental and psychological problems embarrassing? Mental health is part of health, just like physical health is part of health. How many times tonight have we heard about mental health? As a healthcare provider, I can tell you that I see mental health concerns more than I see mono, more than I see pneumonia. I like data, so let me share this one fact. In 2022, 15% of students between the ages of 12 and 17 reported suffering from at least one major depressive episode in the past year. So in a middle school of 800 students, that's 120 students with a major depressive episode. Mental illness is not embarrassing, it's human. It is exactly this outdated thinking about mental illness that causes people to hide it, feel guilt and shame about it, and then go untreated. Kids in Colorado deserve to have their needs known. There were 83 youth suicides in Colorado in 2020 before COVID. Our students deserve for their needs to be known.
Thank you. Ms. Bertram, you're talking about surveys and-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Jennifer Bertram, and I am here tonight representing Moms for Liberty, and I am also a parent, returning parent to D-11. I have some concerns with the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey that will be given to students. As a parent, I would like to have all surveys be done as opt-in instead of opt-out. Any survey that is given to my child or any survey that is done on my child needs to be approved through me. This would be a good policy to have that includes parents in your diverse education plan. As I was reading through the questions on this survey, I quickly found that none of them relate to academics. I send my child to your schools to learn academic skills that will help them graduate and go on to either a higher education or a trade school so they can be part of a strong working society. I want to know how some of these questions relate to any academics. What is your gender identity? Have you ever carried a weapon such as a gun, knife, or club? If you wanted to get a handgun, how easy would it be for you to get one? During the COVID-19 pandemic, how often did a parent or other adult in your home swear at you, insult you, or put you down? During the COVID-19 pandemic, how often did a parent or other adult in your home hit, kick, or physically hurt you in any way? These are just some examples of the questions on this survey. I find these questions to be very insulting and have absolutely nothing to do with how well my child is doing in school. How dare you insinuate that I am abusing my child? How dare you make my child feel uncomfortable in their own skin? How dare you try to scare my child about using guns? After all, that is what this survey is all about, an agenda to make my child feel they are not worthy of having me as their parent. Director Ott, you stated in the last work session that the board is being ignorant by not doing these surveys. I completely disagree with you, Director Ott. I do, however, agree with and support President Mopakum's statement that he believes not doing these surveys actually honors parents' voices and does not disrespect parents. I also agree with Director Nelson about why do we need to have these surveys done in our classrooms when you already see what's going on in the classrooms? Why are we excluding parents in this inclusive world? That doesn't sound like a diverse and inclusive school system to me. We are told that parents are able to opt out their children out of things happening in their schools, yet parents are not being notified of things happening in their schools to even know they can opt out. I support a decision for this board to make D-11 an opt-in option district. Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy Shunning. Darcy Shunning, oh, you're here. The next one is Kristi Davis, just to let you know who I have.
Good evening. My name is Darcy Shining. I'm a mother of two young children. I wanted to talk briefly about Policy LC. The gist of the Panorama Survey is that it violates students' privacy, it violates parents' privacy. But basically, I could talk about policy all night, and everybody else here is going to do that and talk about feelings plenty, but what I don't really hear anyone saying is that never, when the government gets involved with raising children, do good things happen. And no offense, I mean, you guys are a great board, but you're still the government. Teachers are still the government. They're paid through the government. As we've seen over the last several decades, kids have not become more mentally healthy by more school intervention. If they had, then all the shootings that I hear everybody talking about and blaming on various factors, they wouldn't be happening. Kids are not getting better, they're getting worse because the government is stepping in and trying to tell parents that they know best, and the government never knows best. I know best when it comes to my kids. And the more and more laws and the more and more rules that we make, the worse off our kids are, and it's scary. Look at tonight. How many people are here advocating for people to ask our kids questions that they have no business asking?
Please, stop it.
So, teachers, their business, what they're paid to do, what this board is here to do, what schools were here to do, education, infrastructure, basic government, educate our kids. Teach them math, teach them science, teach them how to read, offer them sports, extracurricular activities. That's how kids discover who they are, through interacting with other kids and through how their parents raise them. But ultimately, that's up to us. It's not up to you, it's not up to anyone sitting behind me, it's up to parents. And so, that obviously, you know, brings in the other policy that we're discussing, but I would like for all of you to think, and everybody in this room to think, how does this make the situation better? How does more and more intervention by the board, by teachers, how does it help? You're taking time out of the day where they could be learning math, and look at what's happening with our test scores. They're not better, they're not better than they were 10 years ago. So, the time that our educators are wasting on social emotional learning, on asking kids if they've got guns in the home, they're taking away from actual education, and everything is worse. So, again, you're the government, but you guys are great. Thank you for all you're doing to protect parental rights and to leave the ultimate decision-making up to us parents.
Thank you. And again, I remind, with utter respect for the people that are talking, please do not interrupt them. You will have an opportunity to talk if you signed up. Kristi Davis, and then I have Kyle Guthrie next up, if he's there. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Davis, and I am the co-chair of the El Paso County Chapter of Moms for Liberty. I would like to speak about Policy LC. It is essential for District 11 to have full transparency with parents. The Panorama Survey violates your policy. It is not anonymous, and District 11 should opt out. The heading of the survey starts, "Only teachers and school leaders will see your responses." Where are the parents? Is it not the parents' right to know what their child's response is? Also, Panorama employees will be seeing the results. What are they going to do with these results, and who are they? The statistics obtained from these surveys are based on interpretations of the data collectors and most times through an equity lens. In an article obtained from Education Week, under the Obama administration, a provision was passed that allows third-party organizations to get and share the data from schools with anyone, as long as they state they will use the data for education. Children's data is no longer protected under FERPA, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment. Schools may use identifiable educational records with an external warehouse for linking with other administrative data under the so-called School Official Exemption to FERPA. Then, schools may authorize approved researchers to analyze de-identified versions of those linked records under FERPA's Studies or Audits and Evaluation Exceptions, both of which are frequently cited by districts when sharing student information with researchers for discrete projects. When parents opt their children into these surveys, they need to know that the data is not staying in District 11. Director Ott stated that the data will be used by sources outside of the school. Your policy needs to prohibit data sharing outside of the district and state that parents must opt all children or minors under the age of 18 into surveys given by anyone on district grounds. Why are you even partnering with these companies? Here are some of the questions asked of 11- to 13-year-old middle schoolers on the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. During the past 12 months, did someone you were dating or going out with purposely try to control you or emotionally hurt you? Have you ever touched, grabbed, or pinched someone in a sexual way when they did not want you to? Have you ever sniffed glue, breathed the contents of spray cans, or inhaled any paints or sprays to get high? Did you drink alcohol or use drugs before you had sexual intercourse the last time? There is no academic value to this survey, and D-11 needs to opt out. I wouldn't ask these questions of adults, and I do not believe the school needs to violate the privacy of children and their parents by asking such questions. You need to focus on academics and stop wasting your time, the teacher's time, and especially the student's time on private matters that do not need to be discussed or asked in a classroom setting. Director Ott openly admitted that it would entice students to want to look this stuff up. I do not want my children looking up how to get high from sniffing glue or breathing the contents of a spray can, would you? In closing, I would like to thank Director Jorgensen and the supporting board members for proposing a policy change that would prohibit teachers and staff from asking students their preferred pronouns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Pamela, no, Kyle Guthrie. And the next one on the line is Pamela Berg.
I'm sorry, I wish to speak about the pronouns as well. Should I hold off on that? I think there was a mistake.
Yes, hold off, hold off on that. Pamela Berg. Are you talking about surveys, ma'am? Okay. Okay. And the next one is Nicole Johnston, who came up here and you wanted to talk about surveys. You are up after her, after her. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, and President Malpackham and Superintendent Gall. Thank you for being here tonight, and I'm happy to be here too. I'm here today to speak to you about the Healthy Kids Survey. The survey is completed by all students while in school, not sent home with students. Under the current system, parents must opt out of allowing their child to take the survey, and that is assuming the parent or parents are actually aware of the survey at all. The survey is given unless a parent opts out for their child or children. An opt-out system takes unfair advantage of the fact that parents may not always know what happens in the classroom 100% of the time, and particularly what surveys they're taking. Many parents have been shocked to learn that this survey even exists. By allowing an opt-in system for this survey, you allow the default position to be one of openness, transparency, and respecting-- and the respecting of parents as the ultimate authority when making decisions which affect their family. At the last work session, a board member expressed concern that the number of students taking the survey would go down if parents had the right to opt in rather than opt out. And shouldn't that give us pause if making parents aware of the survey and the sensitive topics that it addresses causes a reduction in the number of surveys taken? Shouldn't it make us wonder whether the survey is really right for the students? On the contrary, making concerted efforts to make this survey available to parents to read and consider prior to their child completing the survey may accomplish the greater good of informing parents of the issues facing students during these confusing times and hopefully providing the awareness and the opportunity to talk to their own children about these issues in the privacy of their home. It seems that the opt-in system, though it may reduce the number of surveys completed, would produce the greater benefit to students, schools, and our communities. Healthier kids in healthier families. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Guthrie, you are up. We are moving on to general comments now. Oh, Nicole, I'm sorry. I put your-- yeah, come on up. I'm sorry. I put your paper down. You are the last one under non-action. And then Kyle Guthrie.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time today. My name is Nicole Johnston. I'm with Community Health Partnership, and I also work as project manager with the Suicide Prevention Collaborative of El Paso County. And I want to talk about, I had some information prepared, but I want to highlight, I hope all of you received the letter from Dr. Leon Kelly. He is our coroner for El Paso County, and he is the one that, right now, because we do not have updated data on the needs of our kids, the issues our kids are facing since 2019, before the pandemic, our data that we get right now is from the coroner. Our data is after deaths happen. And he wrote a letter. He did sign it to all of you. I have a copy if any of you need to see it. But he's the one who works with parents after they die with-- by suicide, and he is gonna do everything possible to prevent that. And he strongly supports the opt-in for-- he actually is concerned about the opt-in program and wants this board to participate in Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. I want to talk also about a lot of information that was said today that's just not correct. For those parents who don't want to participate, don't participate. By saying that they want, they don't want the government to dictate, they're telling the government to dictate an impact that will impact all of D-11, and I find that very ironic. Your role is also a fiduciary one. You have resources and funds and grants that will be, as a result of identifying the needs of our kids. I really hope that you take that seriously. This is not something, when we hear this interchange Panoramic and Healthy Kids Colorado Survey, I think they don't want to use the term Healthy Kids Colorado Survey intentionally. Panoramic means 360 degrees, to have a holistic approach of what's happening. El Paso County has one of the highest rates of deaths by suicide for our youth. If there is something that we can identify ahead of time through an evidence-based survey, we've had the CDC, we had the Centers for Disease Control, Colorado Department of Health and Education, Human Services, the Ann Schutz Campus, they're the ones who are developing these surveys. So are you going to, at the end of the day, listen to experts, subject matter experts such as Dr. Leon Kelly, subject matter experts such as the CDC, the state health, to really understand these issues and to prevent deaths by suicide and mental health issues? Or are you going to listen to extremists who want to dictate policy for the entire district? I hope you do the right thing and support Healthy Kids Colorado Survey and don't create more barriers, which is what a permission slipped opt-in system would be, and support it so most kids can participate who want to.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to general, general comments, and again, I have a stack of comments here. I'm going to call about seven or eight, and we'll be out of time by that time, I think. Mr. Dalgo will let me know. Okay. Yeah. Mr. Kyle Guthrie. Yes, you're good. And Derek Willburn is next.
Good evening. As I'm sure you know by now, my name is Kyle Guthrie, and I represent Moms for Liberty. And while I'm relatively new to the organization, I joined following the absolute circus that was a recent D-20 meeting. The fact that one of our members was assaulted in the parking lot today and the fact that Vice President Jorgensen was threatened here at this meeting reinforces my belief that I made the right choice. Recently has come to my attention that D-11 is about to pass a policy that will ban teachers and administrative personnel from asking kids for their preferred pronouns. Now, due to the nature of my job, I am in a unique position where I can deal with massive clientele from a variety of lifestyles. And one thing I can tell you with absolute honesty is every single client of mine who knows about this policy has voiced support for it. Why is this important? Because this clientele represents the backbone of the people you swore to serve in your But why do I personally believe in this policy? For that answer, I must utilize the most devastating weapon in a citizen's arsenal for debate: information. Recently, Sweden's National Board of Health and Welfare, along with several other European nations, changed their treatment guidelines for children with gender dysphoria, officially ending the practice of prescribing puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones for minors under the age of 18, and severely limiting, and severely limiting mastectomies to minors as well, citing that early and extensive psychotherapy has been proven to be far more effective for treating minors than gender-affirming behaviors. Thomas Linden, head of the department at the National Board of Health and Welfare, went on to add that good psychosocial care is fundamental in these instances. Now, you may ask what something as severe as gender-affirming surgeries and puberty blockers has to do with simply asking pronouns? This is where the plot, unlike my hairline, begins to thicken. It is no secret that there is nothing more important to a child than fitting in at school. It is also no secret that being a transgender child is portraying the media as being the bee's knees when it comes to popularity. It's nearly impossible to go on social media without seeing some story about how countless celebrities now have a seemingly impossible number of children who now identify as non-binary, parading them around like their favorite accessory to smile deeply uncomfortable smiles at the camera. While preparing for tonight, I happened upon a guest column in the Gazette written by a high school freshman who agrees wholeheartedly with the policy for similar reasons. He states, quote, "Teachers wield a unique level of authority in our classroom that naturally creates a power imbalance. So imagine how a young child who wants nothing more than to fit in is deeply susceptible to group thinking outside pressures. Imagine how this child, who has heard from the news, their favorite TV shows, their politicians, their favorite celebrities, and the establishment as a whole, that their opinion means absolutely nothing if they identify as cis." How do you think they would want to answer when their teacher asks them a question point-blank that basically amounts to, "Are you part of the problem, or are you a part of the solution?" I believe the young man hits a nail on the head with his take, but I must reiterate the importance of fundamental rights such as privacy and personal moral foundations. If we cannot afford those to our own children, who should only be concerned with homework and childhood crushes, then why do we even bother to pretend to uphold these principles? Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. I had Derek Willburn. Next one is Mr. Joseph Boyle. No, 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 next one. You are next, on the line. Sorry.
See that guy? No respect. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent. On this issue of pronouns, there are four items that I'd like to bring to your attention for consideration when making this decision. Number one is that of student rights. So there are a lot of people who talk about caring for the rights of all students, when in truth, they really are talking about the rights of a segment of students. What about those students who are not comfortable being pressured into doing something that they're not comfortable doing? Are they not entitled to the same safe and comfortable educational environment as everybody else? The second is that of parental rights. If your child says, "I now want to be called 'they,'" and the school then tells my child, "He must call your child 'they,'" then that becomes your child making the rules for my household. And your child doesn't make the rules in my household, I make the rules in my household. The third issue is what happens when we move beyond pronouns? What happens when a child says, "I don't want to be he, or she, or they, I want to be the," or go for whole, or whatever the case may be? I can't see any difference between a child wanting to be called "they" and a child wanting to be called "the." So, once that door is open, how do you close it? Can it be closed? And the final issue is that of who runs the asylum. Being told no is an important part of maturation. We have reached the point in our society where children are being told what you want is what you get. Well, that isn't always the way it works. And the whole idea of a minority dictating to the majority isn't fair to the majority. So these are all things that need to be taken into consideration. I'd also like to add, I wonder, in the ideological divide that exists between left and right, how many times have you ever had to gavel, or mute, or have somebody in the ideological right dragged from this podium? How many of you have ever been threatened by someone like me? How much artificial fake coughing and interrupting of speakers from the gallery is taking place behind speakers who come here from a leftist point of view? I've never seen it happening. And I wonder why that is. As Stacey Adair said very adeptly a few moments ago, "Why can't we have these debates of ideas as civil, equal adults and reach conclusions that we can live with?" Thank you very much, and thank you for the way you control the meeting. You do a wonderful job. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Joseph Boyle, and up on deck is Sarah Jacobs. Are you here, Ms. Sarah Jacobs? Okay, you are up on deck next.
My name's Joseph Boyle, and it's my turn now, I think. I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf. No person in a position of authority within District 11 should be allowed to force, demand of, or otherwise pressure any student or group of students to make a declaration of pronoun preference. Nothing in that proposed policy interferes with any student's right or ability to inform any staff member of how he or she would like to be addressed. Once again, no person in a position of authority within District 11 should be allowed to force, demand of, or otherwise pressure any student or group of students to make a declaration of pronoun preference. Nothing in that proposed policy interferes with any student's right or ability to inform any staff member of how he or she would like to be addressed. That's what the proposed pronoun policy amounts to, and it stands in stark contrast to the mischaracterizations we're hearing regarding the intent or effect of the proposed policy. Among other things, putting any sort of pressure on students to comply with pronoun preference declarations is unfair, disrespectful of the students' personal rights, and puts a chill on critical thinking within the school environment. Causing students to feel any sort of pressure to participate in pronoun preference declarations forces all students, regardless of their personal beliefs and the beliefs held by their families, to tacitly validate the extremely controversial notion that gender is unrelated to biological sex and that every student's gender, including their own, is always and forever a matter to be questioned. How is it fair to students who are nearing young adulthood to be made to self-censor or just go along with a statement of adherence to an orthodoxy that they may not agree with, whether on religious or scientific grounds? How is it fair to any grade schooler to be made to grapple with confusion over what the words "he" or "she" mean and feel pressured to make declarations that they don't even understand when they should be simply learning to read and do math? How is it fair to a student who may be genuinely gender dysphoric to be put on the spot to make a declaration that he or she may not be mentally or emotionally ready to make? It's not fair. No person in a position of authority within District 11 should be allowed to force, demand of, or otherwise pressure any student or group of students to make a declaration of pronoun preference. Nothing in that proposed policy interferes with any student's right or ability to inform any staff member of how he or she would like to be addressed. This is not about what students can or can't say, it's about what staff should not be allowed to pressure students to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last comment I have here is from Sarah Jacobs, but that I will be going past the one-hour time limit.
Were we gonna let anybody from the other side speak?
Can you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because so far, all we've done is--
Okay. Can you please move them out? Move them out. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. And if you-- okay, thank you.
I'll be back next time.
Okay, thank you.
All love for you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, again, for the people that are out here, I call in the order you sign up. If you want to, the opening to signing up starts at 9:00 in the morning. Mr. Dalgo gives me the list in the order it goes. Okay, I'm not making any preferential calling. It goes in the order, that's what's in the board policy out there in the board operating manual. So if you want to sign up, come early and sign up. And otherwise, you have other opportunities to come and send an email to the board. We are all available through phone conversations. You can reach out to us by phone or email. And I really appreciate if you guys can maintain the order and the decorum in the boardroom. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Sarah Jacobs.
Good evening. My students call me Ms. J. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I've been a teacher in D-11 for 15 years. In my experience, an essential part of teaching is getting kids to buy in to subjects they wouldn't normally care about. How do I do this? Good educators build relationships with students. How do I do that? I have come to realize that there is a vast misunderstanding in this room of how exactly we ask about pronouns in classes. I do not require my kids to do it, and in fact, I'm gonna run you guys through how I do it and many of the responses I get from my kids and the personal conversations I have to kind of illuminate what they've said. So, what I do at the beginning of the year, kind of like what you guys probably did in high school on a little note card, I have kids fill out a confidential questionnaire on Google Forms, asking them things such as their name. "Oh, your name is Gabe, and you want to be called Steven?" Awesome, that is perfectly okay. "What is your pronouns? What can I address you as in class? You want to be they/them? Awesome, that's easy enough, doesn't take any effort on my part, and you know who you are better than anybody else in this room." So, what other questions are in there? Okay? I ask them, "What activities do they participate inside or in, outside of class?" And, "What are their other passions?" "Oh, you're in theater? I'm gonna come to your play. You're in basketball? I'm coming to your game. You're in mock trial? I'm coming to your competition." What else? The very last question I have for my kids, other than them telling me who filled out the survey or whatever, so that I can give them points and all that, is, "Is there anything that will inhibit their ability to come to my class physically and mentally prepared on a daily basis? That simple." Some kids have told me, "My dad has cancer. Sometimes, I might need to get up, go outside, get a drink, calm down." "Cool, just give me a heads up. You're on your way out? I got you. Okay, if you need anything else, let me know." What else? I had a kid tell me that at home, they are not safe because who they are. I simply said, "This is a safe place for you. You need to do your homework because you're getting yelled at at home? Come to my class before school, do your homework. That's it." Simply building relationships is what allows students to achieve success. And being a decent human being to my students and giving them that opportunity to tell me who they are and what they need from me in a private and confidential way, I gave them a place to feel safe and respected, and that in turn facilitates with student achievement. Next part, so what's at stake? Okay? When a teacher does not respect his students, there are vast consequences. The story you heard two weeks ago, and from that gentleman that was sitting back there, the end of that story, you did not get because it was conveniently left out. That student was outed to their parents by that teacher.
Thank you.
They were. They attempted suicide. And they left this district.
Your time is up.
Do better!
Can you please switch off the mic? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the end of public comments. Thank you all for being here, sharing your thoughts and comments. I fully understand that this is a heated, passionate, sensitive conversation. It comes from both sides, but we still have to respect the decorum of the boardroom. And when our children, our students at the very top can demonstrate respect, so can we as adults. This is just about civil discourse and sharing your opinions. I'm just giving a minute for the boardroom to clear out if people want to leave. Thank you, please don't, please. Okay, yeah. Okay, this is what I'm talking about. Usually it comes from one side, it appears like just as the... Thank you, guys. The board appreciates hearing from you. Your feedback helps us better do our work. If you check the box asking a district administration to contact you, somebody from the administration's office will follow up and contact you. If I did not call out your name, there are about 20 or 25 other people that signed up. And again, public comments is only for one hour. Students go first and the rest of the time is distributed between action, non-action, and general comments. If your name wasn't called out, please, we still want to hear from you. Contact us through email. We are available, most of the board members are responsive for emails and phone conversations. I met with several members of the community from both sides of the spectrum right here in the boardroom. Thank you. So we will move on to board member reports and... Director Nelson.
First, I want to start off tonight with just pointing out that as far as elementary school goes, there are nine school weeks left until the end of the year. So, that, when I was speaking with the principal earlier tonight, hit home for me when she said today was the last day of third quarter. So, you know, we're really trying to support kids in the district as far as academics and making sure they're well in our schools and we have nine weeks left to do it, so let's get it done. I also want to just mention that I was recently able to speak with Sandra Bankus. She is doing well after her serious car accident and I just wanted to share that my time with her, she is so passionate about the work that we are doing and more so about the students. I mean, our time together, she was just sharing with me about her experiences leading up to the accident where she was supporting students in our district. And I just think that that is, I use this word a lot, but she's so inspiring that while she is recovering from a serious injury, her focus is on our students. So, just wanted to thank her for that inspiration. And I did get her permission. I'm not revealing anything that she wouldn't want me to. So anyways, continuing on, as you can see, Bristol Elementary, since our last board meeting, I had a great visit to Bristol Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity to learn more about how each school operates and the flexibility the district allows a school to determine how they can best serve kids. Bristol provides violin in kindergarten through third grade, orchestra or band fourth and fifth, art, STEM, music, and PE to all students throughout the year. Teachers at Bristol utilize the amount of time in the day to the fullest extent possible since students are pulled out for various activities during the day. So even though kids are getting pulled out throughout the day for these extracurriculars, you can't deny the success that Bristol is seeing with their 94 school performance rating, making it the 25th highest ranked elementary school in Colorado. I also had the opportunity to visit the 70s-themed art night at Martinez Elementary School. Martinez is becoming one of our arts-integrated pathways schools and it was just so fun to walk around and see the variety of projects that students have been working on. My kids have been talking about the art show since Christmas break. I mean, I'm not kidding, I put it on my calendar months ago and it comes up regularly in our conversation. Along with staff, students, and parents dressed up in 70s gear. I saw some great clothes, you guys. Parents borrowed clothes from their parents. So there was authentic 70s bell bottoms and shirts represented that night. I think those are some styles we should bring back, what about you? So, the PTA always does an amazing job supporting the school and put on yet another fantastic event with decorations, music, pinball machines, and snacks invented in the 70s like Nature Valley bars and Jell-O salad and munchkins. So that was pretty fun. There were a lot of families that attended and it was so good to see parents in the school and kids excited to share their artwork. There was clearly evidence that families want to be a part of their children's education. Which leads me to my final point. We as a district have talked a lot about the board priorities of academic success, increasing enrollment, supporting staff, building trust and transparency. A lot of hard work has occurred to improve District 11 in these areas and we are headed in the right direction. As the work continues, I would like to challenge my fellow board members and our staff to shifting our mindset to one of embracing families. What does it look like if we as a district operate in a way that views parents as a critical piece to supporting the success of students? Do we believe parents know what is best for their students? Do we inform parents of what is taking place in our schools? Last week at the work session, we learned that for the last five years, the Panorama Survey, which is not anonymous, has been given to students without informing parents or providing an opt-out option. Similarly, the 5E Survey, which is anonymous, has been given to students the last several years without parents being informed ahead of time. This is the kind of culture shift I'm talking about. Personally, I believe the district should not assume consent when giving surveys to students that ask personal information such as, how hopeful are you about life? Which is a question on the Panorama Survey. But I am in the minority on the board and among administration. So, at the very least, we have to get to a place where we realize that parents entrust us with their children and it is our duty to inform them fully of all that takes place in our schools. We must recognize that our role as a school district is to provide neutral learning environments. There are a wide variety of beliefs and values among our families. All of them are welcomed and to be treated with respect. I'm gonna say that again, you guys. There are a wide variety of beliefs and values among our families. All are welcomed and to be treated with respect. Parents send their kids to our schools expecting an education and skills that will equip their child for a flourishing future. District 11 must adopt a partnership mentality with our parents. Let's ask ourselves, what other areas can we improve upon? Thanks.
Thank you, Director Nelson, and thank you for talking about Director Bankus. And just like you, I have been in contact with her, but I talked with her several times. But I didn't ask her permission whether I can share about her accident. And since you did mention it, Director Bankus is actually joining us remotely and she is on the line, she listened to your kind words and comments. And earlier this evening, I was having a conversation with her and even Director Juergensen was talking about, you should take the night off, you should not be participating in it. It speaks to her commitment, she said that she is going to participate remotely even though she was in a hospital and then in a rehab facility currently right now. And without further ado, Director Bankus on the line.
Yes, thank you. I, before this accident, I attended the Regional Science Fair at UCCS and I want to give a shout out to those students who participated and their teachers. Saban Middle School and Palmer High School. Those science experiments that they had prepared were so detailed and so deep. Some of them were just freshmen. So they have created their science projects in middle school and then continued in that and got the support that they needed from their science teachers who also reached out for resources to help these students create their projects. And I would love to be able to tell you their names. I took pictures, but I'm in no shape to put anything together to show you. So one of the projects was creating, instead of solar panels to create energy, her project was to put devices in the seabed in the ocean and use the ocean waves to create a constant supply of energy. And I'd tell you the name of it if I could remember. The other one was something about antibiotics going into our water system and the dispersment and neutralizing them once they reach and are discarded through, however they get into the ocean, I don't know. And that's as much as I can remember. They made me proud, they made their teachers proud. These kids are serious, they're young, and I'm glad that District 11 has the opportunity to be the educational support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bankus. Get well soon and we look forward to you returning back to the boardroom at some future point in time when you get healthy and well. By the way, Director Bankus, this was a Saturday afternoon at UCCS when our students were competing in the science competition. She and I attended a funeral together and after that, she went to this student competition and returning from that student competition, yes, when this accident happened, just shows the dedication that some board members have. Even weekends, we are out there supporting our students, especially Director Bankus out there. Director Daniels.
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge Mitchell. They had their play, March 2nd through the 4th, I believe, called 12 Angry Jurors. They did a fantastic job. I was so excited to be there with them and just kind of take in their gifting the opening night and it was just wonderful. So I wanted to say thank you and it was great having them here tonight. Also, wanted to also acknowledge African-American Youth Leadership Conference was held March 4th and it was a great turnout. We had over 500 students that participated from many districts in the greater area of Colorado Springs. So, thank you for the conference, it was wonderful. Enjoyed the parent session, that was amazing. Last night was the last night for the post-secondary career options, I believe. I hope that a lot of people participated so you can get ready. I believe the students are registering for classes in the fall. So hopefully you can talk to them and just kind of see how it aligns with what we shared in our post-secondary, I would say, meetings, four meetings that we had throughout the quarter. So thank you, Mr. Mendels, Aria Soum, Mendelsburg, and Mr. Dewayne Robison and Melissa Smith. Thank you for your hard work on that. And yeah, I think that's everything, thank you.
Thank you. Director Juergensen.
Yes, good evening. I'll be brief because I was absent out of town last week. But I was able to sneak in, the next day I returned a time of reading at Wilson Elementary. I want to appreciate the staff there who were welcoming, organized, had everything laid out on a map. And I was able to go to all my classrooms and read my kid's favorite book, which is Alorax of Dr. Seuss. And it's interesting that that book has a complex story behind it, but almost every grade level I read to understood the meaning behind the book. So, that was an enjoyable time that morning. And then I will provide some feedback on Policy LCU when we get there tonight on the agenda, so thank you.
Thank you. Director Art.
Thank you. I also got to spend some time reading at several schools and it was kind of like passing some of you as we came and went. Also, Superintendent Gall mentioned the Care and Share luncheon. And so in addition to Coronado being featured in the video, we had two full tables there of students and staff from Doherty. They make a tremendous effort for raising funds and food for Care and Share. So it was neat to see them there as well. Let's see. Oh, we did get an email that it was School Social Work Week. So I did want to just recognize our school social workers. It's March 5th through 11th, so thank you for all you do for our students, our families, and our community. I also got to see the play, it was fabulous, Mitchell. And we had some of the jurors from 12 Angry Jurors here in the room, as mentioned earlier. Plays coming up at North, they're doing Justice for Pluto. And so hopefully, my fellow board members, you got an invitation in your inboxes. And Doherty is doing, I can never remember this, You Can't Take It With You. And those are starting next week. So, also just a thank you to all the students who showed up tonight. I know you're passionate and I appreciate you. And the folks who did step outside of their comfort zone to express themselves outside. We did hear you. And those who are emailing in huge numbers about important, issues that are important to them. So thank you for your input as we go ahead and discuss some of the issues that we're discussing. Thank you.
Seeing no further board member comments, I will, Director Loma? Okay, hang on a minute, Marcella. Director Loma.
Well, you know what, I'll just hold this, maybe this should be offline.
You don't want to?
No.
Okay. Okay, you can pull mine up. We go back again, so. Okay, as several other board members, Director Juergensen and Director Art talked about, Read Across America Month and Dr. Seuss celebrations was last week. I got to read at several schools across the districts. Thanks for all those who invited me. I did not get to a couple of schools, I tried to fit as much as I could in my schedule. Sometimes there is just not enough hours in a day. But the most exciting part for me as a board member on the board is visiting schools, interacting with students. That's where the magic happens. Just seeing the joy in our students' faces, the excitement to have somebody read a book and exchange stories. I'm always delighted to hear their comments and feedback too. I was at three schools out here, Taylor, Adams, and Madison. And obviously, the Big Red Chair traveled to two of the schools. I was, kids always get excited to sit in that chair and take pictures. And I also heard that that chair is going to receive a facelift over the summer. So we'll see how that chair looks the next time around this comes around. I was at Scott Elementary, they had what they tagged as possum celebration. We saw the boardroom go to dogs. Scott Elementary Library went to the dogs about a week or so back. They had all these mill dog, rescued dogs out there and several of these dogs found permanent homes. So having some of these pets adopted and I was walking around the library area, you see students with books reading to the dogs. So it was a community reading event. And in addition to that, the community supported by raising over $3,000 for National Mill Dog Rescue. And I also got to read to the students at Jenkins, the fifth grade students out there in the part. And it brought back some favorite memories for me because right there in that part, when my child was a student at Scott Elementary, I have volunteered helping out those teachers. So going back to that part there and reading to the students, that was just... that was just tremendous. And not only me reading, more than anything, I saw Jenkins Students, which is the feeder school for Scott students. Jenkins Students were out there reading to our kids. And you see them in the last two pictures out there. So this shows a clear pathway for the Scott students that future, they're going to be those Jenkins Students coming back and returning. So thanks for Miss Moore for organizing that event. And then finally, I was there at Wilson. And thanks again for the invite, read in a couple of classrooms. The students in that first picture shared their social contract with me. You had to sign the page up there. So seeing our students talking about what the classroom expectations were, that was good. And then getting to read to the students itself, it was a delight. I did see Superintendent Gall and Director Jorgensen as well, and several community members, law enforcement volunteers and parents out there. I want to give a huge shout out to the ladies that are there in the top. They are from the Assistance League, several of them were there. And not only did they read to our students, but they donated over 200 books to, 200 books to that school. And Wilson has a large student population of Hispanic students. It was great to see them get the ELL supports they need and thriving academically. If you want to see equity in action, visit Wilson, where they are welcoming all students in their K-12 journey, providing them the supports and resources they need to excel and exceed their potential. Every classroom I was at, I would ask students if they read books before going to bed. Some of them would raise their hands. And then I would ask them, how many of you guys like to play video games before going to bed? And for that, I would have an answer like just about every one of them. And my encouragement was, read books, that will make you smarter and make your brain grow. And most of them promised that they would read books. And as usually, you have one kid who can, you know, look around that. And he said like, he plays video games that make him smarter and makes his brain grow. So I think his name was Gavin, so, or was it Jerome, I'm not sure. But it's great to see our kids playing games too, that improve their analytical skills. But hopefully, they are also reading books. And another school that I visited was Freedom. And this was nothing about reading books. This was the end of their third quarter celebration out there. And these students were being recognized for not only their academic growth over this past quarter, but also for upholding the classroom social contract, like putting forth effort, consistent effort, overcoming adversity, listening in the classroom, participation, showing kindness. To see all these students come up there with beaming faces, accepting their certificates. And they had this whole set of cheerleading students on both ends out there. The students were welcoming these students to, entire student body was there, the parent body was there. You know, in this day and age, my takeaway was, we as a society are reluctant to hand out individual student celebrations or recognitions. When I saw that those students who were recognized were so proud, brimming with confidence from year to year, students and families so proud of their accomplishments. And it was the rest of the student body too. They have something to cheer for, to root for, to achieve next year. Freedom, some amazing things are happening out there. I cannot say enough good things about the principal out there, Dr. Williams. She earned her doctorate degree now. So she is, goes with a doctorate, Dr. Williams out there, Rochelle Williams. And I expect Freedom to continue trending positively in student growth and enrollment out there. And finally, I was at JROTC Cadet Ball, Doherty Navy JROTC Cadet Ball this past weekend. What an impressive group of young men and women out there. Character traits such as discipline, leadership skills, work ethic, perseverance. Such a great program. Those are the values that are being taught in that program, along with our country's histories and the sacrifices that people have made before us. I am so impressed with what they are, have going on out there. And even at Mitchell, with the other Air Force JROTC program. Highly recommend this program for our high school students, especially if you want to enter one of the military services. They hand out some scholarships for students. The Navy Core Values are honor, courage, and commitment. And under the leadership of Captain Thomas and Special Chief Petty Officer Cook, I'm confident that these students will embody these values when they graduate. It was my honor to speak to the cadets and share a few words of encouragement. And also got to see two ex-board members, Ms. Thrihsanul and Bob Null out there, both of them doing well. And there was an interesting story that Captain Thomas shared with me. When the Wasn academic campus closed, the Navy JROTC program was in the, was in the threat of being eliminated. And Bob Null, who was on the board at that time, passionately advocated to moving that program to Doherty. And it has thrived there for the last 10-plus years. All it took takes is one person standing up and advocating for the right thing. And I thank Bob for doing that because that program is teaching our kids not only character traits that is going to help them thrive, but also so many other things that is going to help them in their commitment, passion, and dedication and perseverance out there. So I am really excited about that. And lastly, I appreciate, I'm done with my slides, I think. Lastly, I do appreciate the passion and the intensity in this room. I appreciate all the feedback that the people here provided. And we are a respectful board, we will listen to all the feedback. And we will process the information that was provided to us and always arrive at a decision that is going to have the students' best interest, all of our students' best interest in mind. As I said before, I would rather take engagement rather than the opposite one, which is apathy. Engagement is, whether it is in support of us or in opposition of us, is much more useful than apathy, which is the greatest danger to public education. Okay? And the other thing that comes to mind, and I will end with this. Over the fall out here, we as the school board, listened to 15 Priority Improvement and Turnaround Schools. These are schools that are in the student performance where it did not measure up according to the state when our students took this state testing in April and May of last year. And we listened to 15 of these school improvement plans. It took us over, each one of those plans went on for an hour, hour and a half. And the education of our students is our primary goal. So I appreciate the passion and the concern that I saw in this room. I urge our community to show the same urgency and passion for the education our kids receive in our schools. Okay? Come and hold us, the board, the superintendent, and our schools accountable for providing excellence in education to our students. When we heard all about those 15 priority improvement schools, there was not one public comment talking to us about those public, how we can do a better job improving the education our students receive. And that is our primary mission. The priorities behind me all centered around our students. I again appreciate the passion, but hold us accountable for our primary mission, which is providing a high-quality education for our students. Thank you. Moving on to the consent items. Director Loma, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. Consent items are E2, Approval of February 22, 2023 Regular Meetings. E3, Approval of Personnel Recommendations for March 8, 2023.
Second.
Move then seconded. Road call, please.
Director Bankus.
Director Bankus, are you? Yes.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been awarded. Moving on to action items, there are no contract awards, there are no budget transfers. Director Daniels, can you please read the Resolution 2023-21 Diversity in Education Month and make a motion?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 2023-21 Diversity in Education, expressing support for the importance and respect for diversity in education. Whereas diversity enriches the educational experience, we learn from those experiences. Beliefs and perspectives are different from our own, and these lessons can be taught best in a richly diverse intellectual and social environment. Whereas diversity promotes personal growth in a healthy society, diversity challenges stereotyped preconceptions, encourages critical thinking, and helps students and staff learn to communicate effectively with people of varied backgrounds. Whereas diversity strengthens communities in the workplace, education within a diverse setting prepares students to become good citizens in an increasingly complex, pluralistic global society. It fosters mutual respect and teamwork, and it helps build communities whose members are judged by the quality of their character and their contributions. And whereas diversity enhances America's economic competitiveness, sustaining the nation's prosperity in the 21st century requires us to make effort, effective use of the talents and abilities of all our citizens in work settings that bring together individuals from diverse backgrounds and cultures. Now therefore be it resolved that the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education values and honors the diversity of the family and of the social and cultural backgrounds of all its students, parents, guardians, and personnel, and encourages its schools to recognize and celebrate their diversity. Be it further resolved that the District 11 Board of Education encourages the Colorado Springs School District 11 to continue to reach out and make a conscious effort to build healthy and diverse teaching and learning environments where all people feel welcomed and are treated with dignity and respect. I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2023-21 Diversity in Education Month.
Second.
Move then seconded. Board members, any comments? Director Nelson.
Did you want to go first? You can have Darlene go first.
Director Daniels.
Thank you. I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you press your buttons again? Yep.
I just wanted to acknowledge that over the weekend Judith, I believe they call her Judy, Human passed away. And she was an American civil rights leader for people with disabilities. And I believe we call them adaptive needs now. She was one of the forerunners with fighting for the country to consider including diversity, the equity of people who were not viewed as human. And they did not have space, they did not have the right to take up space. And I remember as a child watching them sit in for days, fighting for legislation so that they could have elevators and ramps and abilities to go to school and be seen as people. And her passing, I didn't realize that it hit me that hard because of just looking around on how DEI gets really usurped into thinking that something just, just to, just to, I don't know what you want to call it, but she and a few other people who were very instrumental in that legislation did a documentary called Crip Camp. I highly encourage everyone to go and view that documentary. It was on Netflix. And just listen to what they were fighting for, what they were asking for, basics, absolute basics. And they had been ignored and overlooked and turned away from in four decades. And I just, I, when I think about her passing this weekend and just everything that she did and continued to do up until her death. I am, and it's Women's History Month. And it's Women's International History. I mean, like, it's just powerful to think that there are real, real conversations about, it hasn't always been inclusive, just hasn't. And we need to be real. This is not a game. Thank you.
Director Loma.
I just want to take the time to thank, thank God that I'm living in this country. I grew up at a time when, when it didn't pay to share that you're Native American. So my family, it amongst Mexicans. Those days are long gone. Although there are probably races somewhere. I, you have to look for real hard. I don't, I don't see us as a racist country anymore, despite all the lies that I hear. I, I've been able to get highly educated, two masters. I got several postgraduate degrees, all with the help of the United States government. Thank you. Joined the military, learned discipline, raised my hand, my right hand, and made a vow, which, you know, you're not supposed to do. Growing up, we're taught, don't do that unless you, if you do that, mean it. And just because I was discharged, that vow still remains. That's why I'm here behind this desk because I believe in the country, this experiment that young men, those are, you know, we say founding fathers, these guys were in their 30s. I think the oldest guy was Benjamin Franklin, and he was old buzzard. But he was too busy in France having a good time. But it was all young guys, created this experiment. And it took a long while, but we got here. There is, we have a great diverse country. I've been to other countries where women can't even open their mouth. I've been to countries where some people are just treated brutal. But here, my goodness, we've had a, finally, we had a black president. We have several black attorney generals. We have Hispanic Supreme Court justices. We've had a Hispanic Attorney General. Well, I'm just waiting for a Native American president, that'd be cool. But let's see what happens. But that's the country we live in, despite what you might hear. We live in the greatest country on the planet Earth, and I'm just so glad that I can call myself a citizen of this great nation. Thank you.
Director Nelson.
I just wanted to circle back on a statement in that resolution that talks about living in a pluralistic society. And just real quick, Google definition is that it's a diverse one where people in it believe all kinds, sorry. Where the people in it believe all kinds of different things and tolerate each other's beliefs, even when they don't match their own. I think kind of to Director Loma's point that we live in a country where we have the freedom to pursue our dreams, our beliefs, our, the faith that we want, the career that we want, and recognize that the person standing next to you has every bit of right and freedom to do that for themselves, what they desire for themselves. So I just want to reiterate that all people are valuable and worthy of dignity and respect. Our students, I hope that if any are still watching, that you know that you are loved and valuable and worthy of dignity and respect because you are human. And it doesn't matter what our beliefs are, or it's not about that. You know, you're valuable and you're worthy of dignity and respect. So I just want to send that message out tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. And I will finish this before I call for road call. I'm glad to support this resolution. As a school district, we honor the diversity in our district. Diversity is our strengths, is one of our strengths. You can go into any schools in our district and use. You can go into any schools in our district and you see a vibrant snapshot of current day America. And when you look at this board dais, it's a diverse group of men and women, Hispanic Native American and African American, and I am an Asian American myself, along with white Americans out here, colored and white men and women. Diversity comes from our ethnic background, race, culture. That's the diversity that you see out here. But what unites this diverse group is that we are all Americans, committed first and foremost for the singular goal, why we are sitting on the board dais here, which is improved outcomes for all of our students. Education of our students is our main priority. And when all is said and done, this board is committed to putting education back in public education and embracing our community's rich diversity every step of the way. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen? He voted online as aye.
Okay, Director Jorgensen has voted aye, okay.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the resolution has passed, and we are supportive and proud of this Resolution Diversity in Education Month. Moving on to the next resolution, Director Ott, can you please read the Resolution 2023-22 Month of the Military Child and make the motion?
Yes. Resolution 2023-22 Month of the Military Child. Whereas, the month of the military child has been commemorated since 1986 after being established by Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger. And whereas our men and women in uniform cannot focus on the mission or challenges ahead if they are concerned about their children at home. And whereas each day military children undergo unique challenges which they face with resilience and dignity beyond their years. And whereas the high demand of family responsibility that military children accept takes courage and strength as they serve the nation along with their parents. And whereas Colorado Springs School District 11, in our quest to inspire every mind, aims to challenge each student, including military children, to maximize their potential and to excel academically, socially, emotionally, and physically for life, college and career readiness. And whereas the month of the military child reminds the nation that service members' children also serve and gives Colorado Springs School District 11 an opportunity to share our gratitude for the service of military children. Now, therefore, we do hereby encourage our community to purple up, as purple is the color of each branch of the military colors blended together, and join the nation in honoring our military children throughout the month of April to celebrate Month of the Military Child, and especially on April 14th, the official Purple Up Day. I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2023-22 Month of the Military Child.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Board member comments?
While the mic's hot, I'll go for it.
Hang on. Director Jorgensen?
Thank you, Director Ott, for reading that, and thank you to all of our branches of military that are around and that have bases in this city, and all the families that we educate and teach and involve ourselves with in the responsibility of educating their children. I do also want to say, I was able to pull up the attachment that Ms. Kendra Nein sent this evening, and there were a bunch of great tips in there, so I appreciated you sending that resource on. And I also would like to recognize our military liaison, who is Ms. Victoria there in the back row. It's been a while since I've seen you, so welcome, thank you for coming tonight. But she is a tried and true staple of our DLM community and a great person as a point person for anything that we need in the military side as a person that we can go to. So thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for your support, and I wanted to recognize you this evening as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering to recognize Ms. Henderson, and she has been such a valuable asset to District 11, she's been a wonderful resource. Seeing no further comments from board members.
I'd like to make a comment or two.
Yes.
Ms. Henderson, can you come forward, please? I'd like to ask Ms. Henderson to come forward to just briefly describe our Purple Star Schools, which ones they are and what that means to our students and staff and community.
Welcome, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can I, can I go a little further?
Go for it.
Yes.
Just don't charge the dais and you'll be fine.
And I guess I should have signed up for action items to talk about it. But I think I'll probably go over a little more than three minutes, if that's okay with you?
That's okay.
Okay. So I just really want to touch base on building and maintaining relationships in the eyes of a school liaison, okay? There's no order of this, there's no timeline. I just wanted to brief on a couple of things that I have experienced in this position since I've been in this position for over eight years now. So let's start with Purple Star designation. Purple Star designation is and has been adopted by many states, Colorado not being one of them. Okay? There's eight states that have not done it, Colorado being one of them. But because I wanted to bring that up, D11, you guys made the initiative to want to become Purple Star. That wasn't at my level, we were waiting for the state to adopt that program. It came to me from a teacher, a teacher from Jenkins, because they came from a state that they know about Purple Star. So they reached out and they said, "D11, we want to do this. We want to be Purple Star. We want the military community to know that we support you." Okay? So Purple Star, we talked about it, and the resolution was actually adopted in March of 2021. That spoke value, it speaks value about the support that you guys want to give for military students. You guys were the first district out of the 10 main school districts that's here in Colorado Springs. But you guys continue to show that support. So I want to say thank you. So more things that the support in the building and maintaining relationships in the eye of the school liaison. Mr. Gao, when you first got here, usually I don't have an immersion with the installation commander, school district, because you guys are at the same level, 60 days into your position. You reached out to me and said, "Why haven't I talked to the school liaison?" And you requested that meeting. That meant so much to me. Because that tells me that you want to, you know, you're military, but you want to do more for the military community. Okay? I've had heart-to-heart conversations with current board members, past board members, had breakfast with them, because they reached out and they want to know more about what you guys can do as a school district to support military families. We have many resources that come through or funnel through the school liaison program. Anchored for Life is one of them. McCollum Elementary School did not hesitate to bring that program to their school. High military population, yes. Anchored for Life is not just military-focused, it supports all students within the school. And they're doing well with that program. It's easy for me to reach out to different people within your district. You guys have embraced having military family life counselors in selective schools, and that touches base back onto the mental health of our community. Partnerships that I have with Mrs. Perry in the registration office, I can call her at any moment and ask a question, and she responds expedite. Mrs. DeCleve, I have a great partnership with her because military families, they want to do more and they want to volunteer in the schools. So either I work with the schools directly with Mrs. DeCleve to get that military president to the school. Something that recently just happened, our area superintendents reached out and said, "When is your next deployed spouses dinner?" That's huge. No other district has done that and said that they want to come out and support those military families. That speaks volumes.
Tell them how long Joyner had to wait to get a pass.
I don't know how long it took him to get his pass.
So area superintendent Darren Joyner was scheduled to go out, and he was there for about four or five hours in the pass and ID to get clearance to go on base. There's two funny pieces to this story, to actually then find out that he had a pass, because he'd gone to play golf there in the past, and then they canceled the event due to...
Weather. But you guys do have access, so you guys can come out anytime. Another initiative that you guys have done, Mr. Gao, President Mal Pakum, Ms. Nelson, Director Nelson, you guys came out because you wanted a tour of Starbase. Again, that speaks volumes of wanting to learn the resources that we have on base so we can have that connection and build that relationship and maintain that relationship with the district. Mitchell High School, Jenkins, those community liaisons, they reached out to me again. Can we get a tour for our students so they can tour the base and understand the military lifestyle? Again, speaks volumes. This is just a few things that you guys have done to show that you guys support and continue to support military families. So on behalf of Colonel Hanson of Peterson Space Force Base and myself, I truly just want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, I'm going to make a couple of comments as... My daughter did eight different school buildings in a K-12 career. I had 17 different addresses in my 25 years in the military. The challenges that exist for our military children are real. I was very excited first for the opportunity to be a part of District 11, because this is a coming home for me. But then to be the part of, as Victoria brought forward, the district that believes and understands the challenges of what happens for military children. I don't seek to be suggestive that there aren't other children who have equal challenges, and I do believe that the district is doing everything it can to be there for them as well. But for as a personal note, as the father of three and seeing how having moved so many times has impacted my children in completely different ways. All three of my children think of a different city as home, and that's a very hard thing to reconcile with, having three adult children, when you think that you've established a home. And unfortunately, not one of them thinks that home is just wherever we were at the time. They have those formative years that they build those bonds. And in just a short story, I remember leaving Spokane, Washington for Washington DC, and I made the classic mistake of thinking that two days before we were moving and the Packers were showing up would be a great day to play golf with my friends. Without reckoning, we were well-trained at moving, but it was the year that my daughter was finishing eighth grade and going on to ninth grade, and she refused to leave her room. She would not leave her room. And so, you know, I didn't quite finish the 18 holes when the emergency call came in that said, "You need to come home and reconcile with the fact that moving a ninth grader or a soon-to-be ninth grader is not as simple as just what your orders say." So on behalf of my own children and the sacrifices my family has made to allow me the opportunities that I've had in my life, and to all those that exist, not just at Peterson, but at all the surrounding bases, guard, reserve, active duty, enlisted officers, civilians as well. This is a resolution that rings very dear for me, and I do appreciate Victoria and the doors that she has opened for District 11 to remain that district that sets the standard. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Call, thank you for sharing those personal self-reflections about you and your family as well. And Ms. Henderson, thank you for sharing what you did, coming from you, that means the world, I'm sure, for all the board members here and collectively for District 11. I know of some of the initiatives that are taking place, but I did not know about area superintendent Joyner waiting for four or five hours, so that thinks of what we are doing for the deployed spouses, that's wonderful to know. By this resolution, adopting this resolutions, we are walking along with our military families, providing them the supports and resources, a shoulder to lean on if necessary. We are proud of the city's military background and culture at Fort Carson, Peterson Base, and the Air Force Academy. And like Superintendent Call said, we understand the unique challenges these students face in the lack of stability sometimes they have with all the movement that they have to do. But in our schools, these students have a home where they will be honored, respected, and supported. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus is not online at the moment.
Okay.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the month of the military child has been adopted. Moving on to non-action items, the first non-action item is Benefits Insurance Committee Plan Design and Premium Recommendations. And as people are coming up here, I'm going to provide some context and set up this conversation and turn it over to Superintendent Call. On October 12th of last year, at a board meeting that took place October 12th, 2022, the board considered the membership and charge for the insurance committee. At that time, this board up here brought up the topic of going into the competitive market and bidding for health insurance provider. Our current provider is the Best Trust, I think it's called now as Colorado Public Education Health Plan. For those in the community who is interested in that conversation that took place, I would recommend that you go and watch the video on Board Docs from October 12th. It starts around the 2:50 minute mark. And I want to give credit to Director Nelson, who suggested going out for the RFP first and was supported by Director Jorgensen, and Director Loma supported Director Nelson's request. We had a healthy debate at that time on the value of our current plan, and Director Ott cited, who sits on the best board, waltzed for our current plan and its effectiveness in keeping our employee healthcare costs low. After the discussion, we summed up the conversation by stating that there was value in exploring the free market for alternative options. And I got the support from at least four board members who were supportive of going for an RFP. And not only going for an RFP, it was supposed to go in '24, '25. We supported going for an RFP as quickly as possible, and here we are today with the results of the RFP to discuss the recommendations from the insurance committee. And to set this up again, the insurance committee is made up of several employee representatives of each employee group. So this is our employees after evaluating the plan, coming and giving us a feedback. And Superintendent Call, I'll turn it over to you and see if you need to set up this conversation.
Jessica, if you please come forward.
Sure. Thank you, Marissa. So, good evening, Board and Superintendent Gao. Today I'm here to present to you the FY 23-24 Health Plan Design Changes and Recommendations Coordinated with Administration, which includes the Benefits Insurance Committee. Thank you. First, I do want to thank the Benefits Insurance Committee for all of their hard work in this process. They have put 20 hours, some 30 hours, into the recommendation we are providing to you this evening. I do have some insurance committee members with me this evening that would like to speak on behalf of the process, so I would leave it up to you as the board if you'd like to hear from them now or if you'd like to hear from them at the end of the presentation.
We'll go at the end.
Okay.
Let's first meet the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. So first, I want to remind you of the Insurance Committee's annual charge that you reviewed in the October board meeting and then approved in the November board meeting. We wanted to encourage employees to manage their own health by participating in our health promotion program to be better consumers of the healthcare by utilizing the most appropriate and cost-effective healthcare options. We want to continue to measure the current fiscal year total cost of medical and prescription claims as compared to last year, and also the three-year average, with the goal of identifying any added cost containment practices and enhancements. We do know that the Colorado increase for health plans is 12 to 20%. We do know that the Colorado increase for health plans is 12 to 20%. So how can we implement strategies to help lower that average? And then during the October board meeting and then in the November board meeting, the board did ask that the Insurance Committee explore an RFP or request for proposal for our health plan. So we partnered with our insurance consultants, USI Insurance Services, and we did just that. So before we get into the recommendation and the RFP process, I just wanted to kind of share with you the demographic of our health plan. So we do have 3,160 benefit eligible employees with District 11 and 66% of those employees do participate in our health plan and 34% waive D-11 health coverage. The Benefits Insurance Committee does understand that not only are their recommendations going to affect those that have the health plan, but it will impact those that do not have the health plan because a large portion of the premium does come from the District 11 budget. So we also wanted to show you that we do have 50% participation from our ESP in our benefits, 70% participation from our teachers and 82% of our eligible executive professionals participate in our health plan. So before we go into the RFP details, I do want to talk to you a little bit about some of the challenges that we face. These are issues that are top of mind at every insurance committee meeting and things that we discuss every year as a committee. Number one, rising healthcare costs. Medical inflation is at an all-time high right now and Colorado is the second highest in the nation for healthcare inflation. So this may lead to about 12 to 20% increase in health plans for Colorado. Increased utilization and health plan participation. So we do know that 15 to 18 million individuals that are currently on Medicaid and CHIP programs will be losing coverage due to the end of the emergency periods related to COVID-19. And they will be looking for other coverage. We don't know how this will impact the D-11 health plan, but we do know that we should expect to have some additional participants on our plan. Managing the District 11 budget, being able to accurately forecast the D-11 budget so that it is stable over time. An aging workforce with our average age being 49. Healthcare reform mandates, which have required costs to health plans. And encouraging our members to participate in managing their own health. So with all of these challenges in mind, the Insurance Committee put together the RFP goals that would align with some of these challenges that we face along with other important factors that we considered when we were considering a health plan partner. So some of these goals are number one, an efficient and reliable claims administrator, a dedicated service team focused on high-value healthcare, PeakMed direct primary care incorporated as a standard benefit, and we will talk a little bit about PeakMed and what they do here in just a moment. Lower overall cost to the district and to our employees on their contributions. Improved plan design and to include lower deductible, lower out-of-pocket and other possible plan enhancements. And then what we heard was that our employees really want a dual option so that they can elect which plan they would like instead of qualifying through the health promotion program based on the cost and the plan design. So a little overview on the RFP process. We had 24 vendors that were contacted to respond to the RFP based on the needs of District 11 and were vetted vendors of our insurance consultants. 14 of the vendors responded to the RFP. Others declined to respond because of the timeline that was given or they were not able to provide better benefits to District 11. Then our insurance consulting team brought forward seven of those vendors to the D-11 executive team. And we met and evaluated them and narrowed them down to a top three finalist to include the incumbent. The top three then moved to the next round of finalist interviews, which was an all-day process. And we did have insurance committee members and two board members that were part of that process. So I do want to thank them for all of that time that they spent in getting substitutes and taking time off of their normal jobs to, to be a part of this process. And then the top three were discussed and evaluated by the Benefits Insurance Committee to determine the one that would offer the best benefit plan and the best value to our employees and the district. So through the RFP process, the Insurance Committee evaluated health plan partners based on plans, plan design and the cost. We took into account current cost versus the respondents and we reviewed coverage, cost and the impact to our employees. What we are recommending is better than what we have currently and significantly better than what we would have received with a renewal on all accounts. Based on all the information presented and reviewed, the Benefits Insurance Committee voted to recommend a new health plan vendor that would align with our goals and assist with the challenges that we currently face. So the Insurance Committee, based on an overwhelmingly positive vote, is voting to recommend Kaiser Permanente as a new health plan vendor for District 11. Based on a side-by-side comparison of our plans and the costs, it was a lower cost overall and it was also enhancing the benefits to all of our members. The next few slides will outline some of the benefits our employees and their covered dependents can expect with this plan and why it was the superior candidate. We did see that it was more affordable and the least disruptive to our members, which was one of our biggest goals. So a little bit about Kaiser. They are a fully insured, nonprofit health plan which offers D-11 financial stability, accurate budgeting, and they are willing a strategic partner with a mission to help the schools, students and our employees. There are five locations, Kaiser locations in Southern Colorado, three in Colorado Springs and two in Pueblo. The network also includes three, the three Kaiser locations, which are in Briargate, Printers Parkway and Union and Austin Bluffs. And each includes their own pharmacy as well. And then we will have PeakMed, which is a direct primary care. They have three locations and then the Centura and the UC Health Network. They are part of Community Health Partnerships, which is health equality for all members of the community. They have invested $1 million since 2020 into Colorado Springs and $5.5 million has been invested into thriving schools. So some of the highlights that came out of this process is that members will see a larger network. Kaiser has over about 1,200 physicians in their network in those three locations. They have the UC Health Network, the Centura Network and PeakMed Direct Primary Care with their three locations as well. And then they're also offering our members 10 out-of-network visits per member per plan year. They are offering a dual plan design option, so a buy-up and a base plan, which would give the employees the opportunity to choose a buy-up plan or a base plan based on what fits their needs and their, their budget. So there would no longer be a health promotion program to participate in order to qualify for the Platinum Plan as it currently stands today. Some of the value-add benefits that are brand-new to District 11 would be massage therapy, acupuncture, hearing care, enhanced benefit member experience with e-visits. They would have live chats, 24/7 nurse advice, 24/7 visits with a doctor, decreased prescription costs significantly. And then ClassPass, which is a fitness app. Members can use this fitness app for online, free online fitness classes. Some enhanced benefits for behavioral health. This kind of circles back to what Superintendent Gao was speaking to earlier. There's the Calm App, My Strength App, Ginger App and extended inpatient and outpatient behavioral health benefits for our members. And those apps are all free of charge for the members of our health plan. So a little bit about PeakMed, Prime, Direct Primary Care, which is going to be a recommended added benefit to our plan. PeakMed is a direct primary care provider and they offer onsite services at three brick-and-mortar locations in Colorado Springs. They have one on Tutt near Penrose St. Francis North, one on Tahone Street and one at Northgate near the Bass Pro Shop. This would be an extension of primary care, not a replacement of our members' primary care, so it just opens additional options for them. It is a $0 copay per visit for all of our members if they choose PeakMed as their primary care. They can get same-day, next-day appointments, onsite labs, onsite medications. And then the physicians at PeakMed will call out to specialty physicians for consults, which will help our members avoid any unnecessary high-cost visits. So with PeakMed versus the typical primary care, your typical primary care is on the left column and a PeakMed experience is on the right. So the national average wait time for a primary care visit is 24 days. With PeakMed, it's one day. The duration of your doctor's visit is typically eight minutes. With PeakMed, you get 30 to 60 minutes with your physician. You have five to seven days for lab results. With PeakMed, it's two to three days. You can get prescriptions at under $15 onsite and lab tests at $30 or less. So the results with PeakMed show that those with high-cost conditions can be better managed in a facility like PeakMed and Direct Primary Care to avoid future high-cost claims. And this also really helps our members remove that financial barrier to accessing care. So the next two slides will give you an overview of the recommended plan designs, the buy-up plan and the base plan. And I will give you a side-by-side comparison of our current plans versus the plans that are being proposed. This first slide is going to show you the current plan on the left, our Platinum Plan, versus the buy-up plan or the Kaiser 1500 Plan on the right-hand column. Green means an improved benefit or less cost for our members. Red would mean an increased benefit or increased cost. And black means it's the same benefit as we have today. So as you can see on the right-hand side, there is a lot of green. We have a larger network with little to no member disruption. We are going to have PeakMed at the $0 copay, lower deductibles, lower out-of-pocket, lower copays, the hearing care, acupuncture, massage therapy. We are eliminating the deductible for prescriptions. Currently, you have a deductible you need to meet before you have your copay for your prescriptions and we will be removing that. Lowering your copays for your prescriptions every month and then there will be some $0 copays. With the Kaiser Pharmacy Plan, we are going to really help members lower their costs in most cases. We did a, a couple of analysis with some large cost prescriptions that currently our members are paying deductible and then out-of-pocket for. So within the first two to three months of the plan year, we have members that if they're on a specialty medication are meeting that max out-of-pocket within the three months of the plan year. We ran one of those drugs on this plan and it would only cost the member $10 a month. So it was, it was pretty incredible to see. Now, not everyone will see that large of a difference, but with our specialty medications, it's a max of 250 per medication. So they'll have a cost, cost max there. This is going to show you the base plan that we currently have as compared to the base plan on Kaiser or the Kaiser 5000 Plan. There are a lot of green sections on this plan as well, so we do have PeakMed, the hearing care, acupuncture, some lower copays and then the $0 copays for some prescriptions as well. So for FY 2324 Premium Recommendations, each year the Insurance Committee does bring forward premium recommendations as well as plan designs to the Board of Education for approval. So this year, the Insurance Committee was presented with five different premium strategies for the buy-up plan and the base plan. The Insurance Committee had a very robust discussion on all five and is recommending to the board three different premium strategies for consideration. I will present them in order of the Insurance Committee's preference, options one, three and then two. In each scenario, you will see that the buy-up plan represents the same employee employer split it does today where the district contributes 75% of the premium to the employee and 70% of the premium to the employee and child, employee and spouse and the employee and family. Where you will see a bit of a difference on each of the options is the base plan. So as you're reviewing the premiums, please note that anything in red is a cost increase and anything in green is a cost decrease. And then our premiums would be, just wanted to make a note that our premiums would be increasing regardless if we stayed with the incumbent or we moved to a new plan. We know that medical inflation is increasing, so regardless of what we would have done, premiums would have increased. So, option one, the top section is going to be the medical buy-up plan. This is the one that assumes a 75-25 split for the employee and the 70-30 split for all other tiers. The employee contribution for that buy-up plan design would increase by $27 per month and for a family it would increase by $92 per month. On the base plan for this strategy, we took the 75 and 70 split, which is on the buy-up plan and we just put that down onto the, the base plan as well. So it'd be the same contribution from the district whether you're in the buy-up plan or on the base plan. So the employee contribution would go down to 6731 per month and the family contribution would go down to 28519 per month for the base plan. This would cost the district approximately $3.45 million in additional fees for the district cost. So if you recall earlier, I mentioned the end of the COVID-19 national emergency. We do anticipate increased enrollment in the base plan, which will cost the D-11 budget approximately 589,000 per 100 additional enrollees onto our health plan. So based on this, our best guess, we could be increasing that $3.45 million by 589,000, potentially to $2.3 million. So just keeping that in mind. The Insurance Committee does understand that the cost to D-11 may have an impact on compensation, which means less money in the employee's pocket. So the more we put into benefits, the less potentially there is for, for compensation. So the Insurance Committee also recommended as, as a second option, option three. So the buy-up plan would stay the same in all three options. It is the base plan on this one where you'll see 8515 contribution for the employee and then a 7030 contribution for the employee, spouse, employee, children and family. So it would be consistent with the buy-up plan with the 7030 split. This would cost the district approximately $2.6 million for the district portion. And it would cost the district $569,000 per 100 additional enrollees to this plan. This base plan structure does align more with what other districts have as their contribution structure where they pay a little bit more for the employee and a little bit less for the family. And we do believe this would allow the, the board to set aside more money for compensation for all employees and assist more with the unknown with the additional enrollees in our plan. The third option, the Insurance Committee recommended is option two. For this option, the base plan has an 80-20 split for the employee only and then 75-25 split for the employee, spouse, employee, children and family. This would increase the District 11 budget by $2.79 million and would be 535,000 per 100 additional enrollees on this plan. So, other than that, the Insurance Committee is also recommending that we continue with our current providers, Delta Dental, iMed Vision and Sun Life Financial for our life and disability and Rocky Mountain Reserve for our flexible spending accounts and our Cobra Administration. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions and I have the Benefits Insurance Committee members here that are also able to say a few words about the process.
Okay. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Of course.
You provided a comprehensive summary out there, captured everything that that committee discussed. And I was there, part of the discussions that took place in the Health Insurance Committee, listening in for most part to the conversations that took place and then as the RFP process went along, I participated as much as I could, but I was not there as much as Director Bankus was. Director Bankus was there for every step of the process. So I wanted to thank Director Bankus for being in there, representing the board. I want to thank you personally. This was a tall task to ask you, the board charged you in October to go around and find an RFP. And I clearly remember the conversation at that time when you were standing here, you were hesitant and you were thinking it's going to be, we can't go till 24, 25, it's going to be this. But then you did go through it and I'm sure you've been busy the last three or four months trying to get this RFP and having all these committee meetings together. So thank you. And then I want to thank our employee groups, all of you, the discussions that you guys had out there, the healthy discussions that you had out there. It was employees talking with each other and this was a committee and Director Bankus said this to me so many times. said this to me so many times, she said that this is how a committee should operate, because there were about 20 people on that committee, and everyone spoke up. There were no silent partners out there. And a lot of these people were directly impacted by the health insurance, and I found out that some people in there don't even, are going to benefit out of this health insurance, but they were still there in the conversation. Before I turn it over to the Board, I do want to hear from our employee groups. We have one from each one of our employee groups. I don't know which order, do you want to go first? I know, do you want to go Jeremiah first?
Sure, Jeremiah.
Okay, Jeremiah, representing our exec pro group. Yeah, no, he's exec pro, exec pro.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Introduce yourself and take it away. Give us some key takeaways from your time on the committee.
Yes, sir. In respect, I will be brief. So, good evening, President Malpackham, Board of Directors, Superintendent Gall. My name is Jeremiah Johnson, and I'm one of the two executive professional representatives on our Insurance Committee. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Board and the Superintendent for valuing our employees and their benefits program enough to begin a competitive RFP process. I was really impressed to what you were talking about by the committee function as a whole, by the robust collaboration that happened, and the quality guidance that was provided by Jessica Lacy and Brian. Next year, the plan members will learn how much this process has improved our coverages while, in most cases, simultaneously lowering employee and district cost. So I found that really great. And that's really, it was just a fantastic process. Everybody spoke up. I mean, I can repeat what you said, but I was impressed by it.
I didn't participate in the conversation, but one of the things that you said out there stood out to me in those committee meetings, the Health Insurance Committee meetings. You said by not going for this RFP process much earlier, we lost so many opportunities along the way where our employees would have benefited. Does that aptly capture what you said out there about lost opportunities?
I wouldn't argue with your point, sir. I'm not sure how free I am to talk about that.
Okay, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, you know. Ms. X, do you want to? So, again, introduce yourself. I think you are a teacher at Coronado, representing our teachers. And, C.S.E.
Good evening, President Malpackham, School Board members, and Superintendent Gall. My name is Donna X, and I'm actually a teacher at Dougherty High School. So Coronado, Dougherty, you know.
Did I say Coronado? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. There is. And I've visited you in your classroom.
I know. I also want to thank you for initiating the RFP process on the health plan. Each plan presented will be an improvement on our current plan. And I'll be honest, I was a little hesitant. I was like, "We're gonna do what?" But it ended up being, you know, good. I just wanted to give you some feedback on what went through in the process. Initially, I actually volunteered to be on the interview committee. I took one of my days to hire a sub to cover my classes so I could be on the interview process, and I felt like it was a fair process. And I actually walked away feeling very optimistic about our choices. We took that information back and our impressions to our larger committee, and I thought our discussions were rich and thoughtful and collaborative. And of course, I asked many, many, many questions. However, at our last meeting, I was a little uncomfortable because it felt like we were being pushed kind of in a particular direction. Out of the one through five plans, we only had two papers, the second plan and the third plan. And at that point, it didn't feel as collaborative, okay? And I guess when I look at my role, my directive was to find the best value plan for all employee groups. I wasn't thinking about just teachers. I was thinking about everybody. And oftentimes, in the past, I voted on things that actually made my situation more expensive. But when I looked at the contribution plan, Plan One offered equal-dollar amounts to both premium structures. However, this would cost the district more money. Plan Three, on the other hand, puts more money towards the employee in the Base Plan with the hopes of maybe attracting new employees and quality employees. It would also bring us closer to what other districts contribute to their family plans. Additionally, it was a lower cost to the district. I voted on what was based on the contribution plan that was best for employees. However, the School Board, you guys must make the decisions based on what's best for the employee and what's best for our budget. I don't know the budgeting information, and I don't know that well. And so you guys have to make that final decision. However, in closing, I would just say, a plan usually doesn't work when leaders do what they think is best for the people without first listening to the people. So I think for overall this process, we were definitely listened to, and we were able to speak and find out the information and share. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback really very much. That aptly captures everything. No, you don't have anything to answer. You can sit down, please. Yes, that really, really captures everything that went on, conversations out there. Thank you for your honest feedback too on that. And this is a big, big, this is going to have an impact on our staff significantly. We had several discussions at the beginning of the Board meeting out there. This is going to impact our staff at the kitchen table when you guys are going to be doing your taxes, balancing your checkbooks. These are the things that are going to impact our staff right away. So I'm thankful that, so we need your staff input back to us, feedback. Mr. Kevin Cook, he is the president-elect of the ESP Group. Take it away, Kevin.
They had me at massage therapy. I like to say, I appreciate the D11 Board of Education, Mr. Malpackham, Mr. Gall, for allowing me to speak on behalf of the educational support professionals. I will not be speaking for myself. I will be speaking for everybody. Like I said, you had me at massage therapy. You know, I'm going to give a big shout-out to our D11 Benefits Committee. We did have some long, heartfelt conversations when voting on the carriers and packages that will soon benefit our staff. I personally thank you for stepping in to assist our committee with the recommendation as this opened my eyes to the fact that there is a bigger picture than just benefits. Let's see, the day that it was announced that the Board of Education would put out the RFP on our medical benefits, I think I was in the back of the room wiggling my hands and shaking my arms like I was about to do the hokey pokey and turn myself around. But, and honestly, forgetting where I was, I almost shouted some things in joy with a standalone ovation that would have got me escorted out of here by Dave. But at the same time, this is one of our district goals, to assist our staff towards achieving better mental, physical, and financial health. We are dealing with some, we're all dealing with some form of post-traumatic pandemic stress, and it shows it sometimes. This is a big step in the right direction to retaining, recruiting staff from not only our communities but the surrounding areas in the state of Colorado. As I go into the role of ESP President, I find myself being challenged and going toe-to-toe with the thought of, you know, what are we going to do to better the well-being of our staff and our educational support professionals? The decision to put out the RFP, you know, for better medical health plans makes that challenge just that much easier for success. Knowing that the trust would have raised our fees by about close to 25%, that would have been heartbreaking for our staff, especially those at the foundation, which we call ESP that holds up every district. Though the most of us are financially at the bottom of that pay scale, we are all equally human beings. A catastrophic situation to our families could send us all into bankruptcy with the threat of losing a home or assets that we would want to leave to our loved ones. It's hard when you're faced with the decision between putting food on the table for your kids and getting a surgery that could extend the life so that you can spend time with your family. When I see decisions like this, I'll be the first in line to tell you that the Board of Education, our superintendent, our meet-and-confer team, our executive, our professional teams, we all care. District 11 cares. We may not be able to satisfy everyone, and we may not be able to give everybody what they want because that's simply impossible. What we can do is make the decisions right now for our district and the needs for longevity for a better future. This is a win-win-win situation because no matter what we had chosen, it would have been better than what we had. That is extremely, that is an extremely rare occasion. On behalf of our educational support professionals, I just want to thank all of you and let you know that we know you care. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we can do the jazz hands too. Thank you, that was really great. Massage therapy got me too. And I mean, I don't know, can Board members sign up for this plan? This is...
And acupuncture.
I appreciate the feedback, especially coming from you, because you represent a group of employees, a lot of them make minimum wage in our school district, and they cannot afford to get a health insurance. When we saw one of the slides up there, and there are 1,100 or so employees that don't take health insurance, a large chunk of them are ESP folks, because some of them are risking major health problems by not taking an insurance because they have to make the choice between putting food on the table, taking care of their kids, and having to take a health insurance plan. Any one of these three options is going to be better than what it would have been. So as you said, aptly captured, it's a win-win-win situation. So with that, I'm going to open it up for some discussion from the Board. Director Loma.
Well, after hearing everything, I feel real good. You guys made me feel good because of all the positive, you could feel the positive energy here. You know, we, this district has been guilty in the past of having silos, you know, and everyone doing their thing, their work, and just concerned about their department or their area. And that's been something I recognized for years ago. And one of my desires was to break those silos down. And that's easier said than done because we are in it for one cause, and if we got to focus on that, and somehow we had to break those walls down. And I think that's our job to do that. And we can say we care about our employees, but you know, where's the money? You know, that matters. And so I see these plans, and you know, my desire is to make it as affordable as possible. Whatever our budget can handle, and if it means we've got to pay more, I'm okay with it. Because without you all, every employee group, we're not a district. We can't function. And so you are the district. You know, you serve the parents of our district. And so that's why this whole thing happened. It was a board move. It wasn't something we had to go and have a discussion with, meet-and-confer. We didn't have to go to the union. We said, "You know, we need to make, do something for our employees." And so we all got together, said, "Let's do it. Let's look at it and see if we can really make a difference in people's lives." And I think we've taken a step in the right direction to break down the silos. And we're not perfect, especially in this day and age where, you know, differing opinions, we're not perfect, we're not going to agree on everything. But I don't think you can argue the fact that we're trying our best and from our point of view, and that we do care about our employees. And so I just, I thank you for your words, every one of you, great words, great words. Amen. It's an excellent way to come and end a meeting, amen, especially a meeting like today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I assume you don't have any questions at this time, Director Loma? Okay, thank you. And I'll come to you next, Director Nelson. And one of the things I remember, I didn't speak very much when I was sitting on the committees, but one question I did ask is, why was this not considered before going for an RFP? And some of the conversations that took place in that room was whether it came from the leadership of the district or members on the committee. People are comfortable where they are at, and Director Art mentioned earlier this evening about students stepping out of the comfort zone. It's the same thing. Leadership had to step outside the comfort zone to figure out if there are better options out there. And when you step out of that comfort zone, you are going into an unknown area. We don't know what it is. But in this case, by going out and competing and including our current incumbent plan in there, we were able to find a better plan. This was a win-win-win situation. So this could have easily, should have happened several years back, and this would have ended up saving our employees considerable amount of money. And for that, I was part of the previous votes that, you know, maybe I should have pushed harder, and that's a learning lesson for me. But this board did push it, and we are in a better situation because of that. Director Nelson.
I just want to extend my gratitude to all of the hard work that has gone into this process. I know it was a heavy lift and not an exciting one that we wanted to enter into just because of the workload and the timing being kind of a crunch. But, so I just recognize that, and so thank you to the team that did the hard work. Thank you to the Health Benefits Committee. Did I say that right? Health Insurance Committee? You all know who I'm talking about. Just thank you guys for your time and considering all of the sides and the employees and, I mean, the fact that you took one of your own days, Ms. X, to volunteer. I mean, that seems like maybe we should work something out about that.
I think she got paid for it. Oh, did you volunteer?
Did you use one of your, like, vacation days to volunteer on this committee? That's what I thought I heard you say. So, okay, good. Just thank you, though, for your willingness to do that. That speaks a lot to your character and desire to serve our district and the employees. So thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Just, I know that you mentioned it early on, that it will have minimal impact to members' translation. I think that means, for the most part, people will be able to keep their doctors, their current doctors, if you could just speak to that.
Yes, so it will have very minimal impact to the providers that our members currently have, and we're expanding the network with Kaiser and PeakMed.
Okay, great. I also wanted to ask, I know we spoke, it was mentioned earlier in the superintendent's report about mental health. This was on my mind even the last few days. I reached out to Dr. Malpackham to see if he knew the answer, and he said, "Ask tonight." So can you, if, is mental health coverage part of this plan? Like, if somebody wants to go see a counselor, does their copay go towards that?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
There is a copay. So we have our EAP as on the superintendent's show tonight. We have our Employee Assistance Program, which offers all employees, not just those on our benefit plan, eight sessions per person, per problem, per year. And that's virtual or in-person visits. And then through our health plan, we have a copay for behavioral health visits as well. And there's inpatient and outpatient facilities that are available to our members. And then with Kaiser, they have all of the apps that are available for them too.
Okay, and is any of that new?
The apps will be new to our members.
Okay, but we have had the EAPs and all of that in the past.
Yes.
Okay. Glad that we're still providing, glad we're still providing that service.
Yes, it'll just be enhanced more than it is today.
Yeah, that's awesome. Very important. I know it was mentioned in the feedback that there were some other options that were originally a part of the plan. I don't know if it makes sense to present those for transparency's sake, or the reason that it's presented in this way tonight is just to help narrow. We're not trying to keep anything.
Right, it was just the recommendation from the Insurance Committee is what was presented. But I do have all five, including an additional one that President Malpackham wanted to see as well.
Do you have that as a slide or?
I have them in paper for the doc cam.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then maybe we can load it on PortDoc so everybody can see it. So one thing I do want to, all the green up here, that's so exciting to see. It's just all green up there. In this Buy Up Plan, the current plan is out there on the black, and this is the Buy Up Plan. Your individual out-of-pocket maximum for the individual and the family, the deductible, all of it is out there in the green, including many options that you didn't currently have. And do you have copies of that for each of the Board members? What do you have in the hand up?
No, I don't. I just have each plan individual, so I can put them up on the...
Oh, you can put that up on the plan. That's fine. You can remove that then.
So do you want me to go through all six of them, or do you want to just go over the ones we did not review tonight?
Well, I think this was the first plan that you already showed.
Yep, this was Plan One that we already showed.
The basic, if you can put that up there. So according to the master agreement, what is required is we provide at least one plan, which has... which has the 75-25, 70-30 split. And that's the buy-up plan that you have up there. And you can see it in the parenthesis, 75-25 split and the 70-30 split. But when you go to the base plan, the district gets 88% of the cost and the employee gets only 12% of the cost. And then the subsequent plans, it's 82% for the district and 17.8% for the employees. So this plan goes over and beyond what is required in the, what's written in the master agreement by providing this base plan.
And I will also add District 11 has amazing benefits currently. And so if we were to go with that plan, that would just be taking it even exponentially higher level. And compared to other districts in our area, we would be doing just way, way, way more. We already do a lot more than other districts in our area. Is that a fair statement to say?
Yes, we do. Yeah, as compared to other districts, our family coverage is premium is more costly or cost-effective than other districts in our area.
And.
They're free on the buy-up plan.
And the last thing before you pull that slide off, it tells at the bottom what the district cost, additional cost is going to be, which is about $3.5 million. But we also saw at the very first slide, about 1,100 of our employees do not have health insurance at this time. So there is a very good possibility by offering this base plan where the district takes most of the cost up. Several of our employees that currently don't have insurance could sign up for at least the base plan. Would that be a fair assumption?
We have 3,160 benefit-eligible employees. So those are the ones that could potentially take our plan. 66% of those take our plan currently.
And then for every 100 employees that we add to the plan, the cost there at the bottom will go up by.
589,000.
Five hundred, about 600,000. So if we add, let's say, 300 more employees to the plan, almost we are going to have $1.8 million added to that cost, which is going to make our cost go up to 5.3 million. And the more we add to the district cost, the less we have for compensation for our employees.
So I will chime in here that that is where I will just ask fellow board members to pause and consider, how do we want to spend our money? Do we want to put it in salary, which we know that that is something we are passionate about raising, staff compensation in that manner? Or do we put our funding towards benefits? And as I noted previously, we already have amazing benefits. They're going to be even more amazing. Where, how do we want to handle this? So going back to the comment previously about the feeling a little bit narrowed in on the options, the board reviewed some of this information during an executive session and kind of went through, can we afford, for example, this Plan One? We don't, we haven't had our compensation conversations yet. That's to come. And so just taking a step back and thinking about how do we want to invest our dollars? What is it that's going to benefit our staff? Do we put it directly into their pocket or do we put more towards benefits? Knowing we have 1,000 employees that if we put it more towards benefits, it may not impact them. So we kind of guided that perhaps Plan One should not be a true consideration because we don't know that we can afford it with what we want to do compensation-wise. So just, do we continue down, allow the committee to continue down a path when it may not really even be a viable option from a budget perspective? So I hope that the committee recognizes that we really value the work that you did and your guidance and feedback. And we know Plan One is amazing, but we'll have to have those conversations and decide whether or not we can actually afford it.
Yeah, that perfectly captures it. Moving on to Plan Two.
The insurance committee?
Which they came and talked about. We'll come back to that. Quickly go through.
Sure. Looks a little off-focus.
There you go.
We might need to get that one. It's very inexpensive. It's a little over a dollar a month for a vision.
That's amazing.
Okay, so Plan Two is the same structure for the buy-up plan. And for the base plan, that should say base plan, my apologies there. But this is 80-20 on the employee and then 75-25 for the employee, spouse, employee, children, and family. So going down by 5%.
And again, this is going to be better than everything that's required by the master agreement because master agreement says the first option, the second base plan beats what is required by the master agreement.
Right, one EPO plan with this structure here.
Yes, okay. You can move on to Plan Three.
Plan Three, which was the insurance committee's second recommendation. Okay, so this one on the base plan, we have 85-15 for the employee only, which is more closely aligned with what other districts are doing in our area, covering a little more for the employee. And then going to the 70-30 for the other tiers, which is then going to be aligned with what we do on the buy-up plan. The same 70-30 split.
And this option, what it does is younger employees, if they don't have a family and they want to sign up or, you know, get employed by our district, they have an option now, a low-cost option where they can choose health insurance for themselves. And also employees who are in the ESP group, who are, you know, where finances is a challenge for them. Some of them who are cooks or bus drivers in our schools. It's a really reasonable option, much better than what they had before. Okay. And then Option Four, which the committee considered.
Okay, Option Four that the committee considered on the base plan is a 75-25 split for the employee only and then 70-30 for the other.
And this was just following what's there in the master agreement, giving the same split for both the buy-up plan and the base plan. You can see the employee cost is going up a little bit compared to what it was before.
Correct.
And the last.
Okay, the last two.
Yep, Plan Five.
So the last plan that the insurance committee reviewed was just offering one plan, no base plan. It would just be the buy-up plan only.
Okay. That means all of them get the buy-up benefits, but they don't have an option to choose. This is where if you are a younger employee and you're saying, I'm in good health, I don't, you know, feel the need to pay a higher premium. So they don't get the option of a base plan.
Right. And then it makes this a little more unaffordable.
And the last plan that I asked you to put the numbers up was Option Six.
Okay, so Option Six, at the request of President Mel Pakem, is the 75-70 split on the base plan per the master agreement and then taking these district monthly costs and plugging them into the buy-up plan. So that would increase the employees' cost by $100 per month and the family cost by $287 per month on the buy-up plan. And they would keep, almost keep, the base plan flat.
This is kind of the flip side of Option One that we considered, where the buy-up plan, we provided 75-25 and then took the cost down. So that made the cost on the district considerably more. But if you do the flip side of it, what we do in the buy-up plan is ask our employees to take most of the cost. Okay? So that becomes the flip side of the argument. Just wanted to provide that information, not that the board is considering Option Six. So now that we have all the six options out there, we never considered Option Six. It was just to let the, Option Six would have also been satisfying all the requirements of the master agreement. Director Nelson, are you done with your question?
Yes. So just for the community, we'll load these extra options onto board docs, just in case you want to go check them out.
Director.
Thank you. I appreciate too the work of the committee. And I respect that you spent a lot of time on this. And when the board pushed back with a couple of options that you didn't like, it sounds like you just turned around and told us what you really wanted. So thank you for that. And I have to caution my fellow board members too, this, as a board, we have overridden committees before. And if we keep it up, then I think, I mean, we need to pay attention to the costs, yes. But if we continue to not value committee input to the point where we're going along with committee recommendations, we might find ourselves finding fewer people willing to serve on committees. So just a thought for that. Also, one of the things, when I was looking at this, massages aren't covered. Sorry for folks, if you want the massage therapy, you got to go with the buy-up plan, it appears. So you can talk about that. But it's not on the base plan. Keep that in mind, whichever plan you go with. So that, is that, well, there are other discrepancies, obviously. We're just picking a massage therapy, it sounds like. So, all right.
Is the massage therapy not available in the base plan?
It's not. And then acupuncture is a $0 co-pay in the buy-up plan and it has a co-pay on the base plan. So there are a few differences. Yeah, some advantages in being in the buy-up plan would be a lower deductible and out-of-pocket and co-pays too.
Is massage therapy available now in the trust plan?
It is not.
Okay.
So there's definitely some.
No, no, it is not available yet. Make sure this is. 7-1, if the board approves it, and March 22nd.
I have to admit, Option One also with the equal payments from the district. That's, if I remember that correctly, that seemed tempting. But those are my only comments for the moment. Thank you.
Director Huggins.
Just my main concern, I think, is it's not necessarily the difference between, so if you can go between Slide 17 or Slide 18 and 19, you know, first choice, Option One, second choice, Option Three.
Is this the one?
Yeah, so, yeah, 3.45 million and then scroll down, 2.63 million. You know, here in this slide, we're talking about 900,000. But when we think about going back to Slide Three, if we have this, you know, 1,074 people that are going to go, wow, D11's kicking butt and we're going to come over and we go with Option One at the price of 100, you know, 100 new participants equalling about 600,000, it could quickly crank it up to the point where then the people that don't elect to have the benefits and they still waive coverage, might be ESP, might be teacher, are then going, well, now I only get a 1% non-recurring or now I only get a, and then that's a double lose for them. So that's kind of my concern there of that, the weight of the decision that we have to balance out. And not that we're not disagreeing with the committee, but just thinking, yeah, we do need to be mindful of the budget. And we do want to make it attractive on the salary side for our existing staff and our staff that we're trying to recruit and retain. So that's my main concern, is that if we've got even just 100, you know, that kicks that 900 gap to 1.5, 200, I mean, you quickly do the math. I like Option One. I mean, Option Six seemed interesting, but we've already gone through the process so we're not going to entertain it, which leads me to Option Three because I started out as a teacher and I want to be by myself. And I think I made 1,900 a month when I first started teaching back in '09. And, you know, you would appreciate a very cheap health insurance bill, so as one employee. So that's, I think, is attractive to myself, thinking about our upcoming staff that are younger or maybe not married or are choosing to say, hey, my wife's plan is great by herself, my plan is great by myself, and we're just going to keep our own individual plans. You know, that makes it attractive in that consideration while still being a decent cost to the district. So, and giving us money to wiggle room on the salary side. So that's my overall sentiments. I love the work of the committee. I appreciate the honest feedback. I just think that that's where my perspective is coming from. So thank you for letting me share that.
Director Nelson.
Yeah, I just want to circle back on the comment that Director Ott made. I'm not sure what other committee decisions we've overridden that she's mentioned. But I don't see this as we're trying to override a committee decision. I see it as it's not fair that we've asked them to make a decision without having all the pieces to the puzzle. And yet we actually don't even have all the pieces to the puzzle. Like, we haven't had those compensation conversations yet. So we are having to stick our necks out and make a decision that we think is in the best interest of all of our staff. And it's not that we're trying to disregard the committee, but that we are having to look at the whole picture, trying to fit those pieces to the puzzle in that we, I mean, I guess I, maybe as the treasurer, have a little bit of an idea of what those conversations are going to look like, more so than the rest of you. But just with the information that we have, making the best decision that the health insurance company committee did not have access to. So it's not that we're disregarding their input, it's that we have more information and looking at it that way. So thank you, guys, for your guidance.
Yeah, thank you. And that, thank you for that feedback that you provided out there. And we also have to keep in mind that over the last four years, I've said this repeatedly, the district has lost 4,300 students. And this year, we were able to plateau that loss. But that impact hasn't hit our general budget yet because of declining enrollment averaging. And also because of all the ESAR money, which is the federal COVID money the district has received over the last two years, that federal COVID money is going to end next year. $100 million or so unprecedented money that came to us where we were able to hire additional staff, provide various supports in our schools. All that is going to end at some point in time. So we got to be really, really careful how far we commit ourselves. Each one of these plans, as told by our employees, is better than what we have right now. It's a win-win-win situation. And going back to the October 12th conversation, there was resistance even wanting to put together an RFP right from the board dies. And here we are, having a win-win-win situation for our employees. So. Director Loma.
Well, I guess to write on what Director Nelson was saying, you know, I would like a consensus from the groups. Do you want more money or do you want better benefits? I mean, that's, because you guys did a lot of work and you should have some sort of consensus of what you'd like. I like Option Three because of the $83 employee cost for a young, new teacher or at least lets her get in. And I really think that's appealing because we, aging, the average age of D11 is 49. You know, in my book, that's a bunch of old buzzers, you know, that's old. And they're getting ready to walk out the door soon. And we need to attract young people, you know, just for sustainability's sake. And this one, for me, if I was a young guy, I'd come out of college with my student loans and I go, man, I could do that. Means I can't go to Starbucks, but I could do that, you know what I mean? So I like that. I do. And the other cost is a little higher, but not much higher. And so that's why I'm trying to juggle it, 2.63. We probably could cover that. But if, like you said, if we have a couple hundred people come back in, which could happen, that's another million, like that, you know what I mean? And so 3.6, can we handle that? Maybe. But don't get mad at us if that happens and say, you know what? We may not be able to give you that, you know, ginormous raise that you'd like to have. Last year, we just gave, we gave historical raises. Something that has never been done in the history of D11. That was this board, we brought that forward because we wanted to give you more money and we believe in you. But, you know, so pray for us, if you pray. Think about it if you don't pray. Because we have to make a very tough decision and consider everybody. And when I think of this cost, I always, I think of the ESP based on what you shared. They're the ones that struggle a lot financially. And not that we others don't. But, you know, if you're paying, you know, 15 bucks an hour and, you know, and, you know, you can get more money at McDonald's for 17 an hour, you know, it's, they're, they're struggling. And so, I, I always consider, you know, there's an old preacher, he's always said, always put the cookies on the bottom shelf for the, so the kiddies can get some. So, we have cookies on the top shelf, but you gotta keep some on the bottom shelf, you're right?
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
Amen?
Thank you. And the, one other thing I want to talk about, option one here, and this was coming even listening to the employee conversation that took place in the committee. Some of the employees talked about how, or at least one employee mentioned about.
Wasn't there a unanimous agreement or agreement? I don't know how many people.
Okay. Okay, it's fine. I will not get into the specifics. I will share my concerns out here. So, I, I will share my concerns about what Director Ott talked about, how it's fair to share the same cost from the district's side, from the buy-up plan to the base plan. My concern out there was that by dividing the percentages, 75-25, 70-30, in one of the buy-up plan, and the district contributing 88.87.9 percentage in the second plan, it's not fair for the employees in the buy-up plan that they have to have 25% of the cost, whereas in the base plan, the employee has only 12% of the cost, or 17.8% of the cost. Okay. So, those employees would, the employees in the buy-up plan would also feel like, why couldn't the district just let us pay 12.1% of the cost? So, it's the other side of the equation. So, here, we have the same issue. The employees in the buy-up plan would feel like the district should take 85% of the cost. But we are trying to find the middle ground out here by providing something that is more than what is required by the master agreement right now. This is going over and beyond what is there for the master agreement to take care of our employees. I had enough to say on this. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay. This is going to come as an action item two weeks from now. Would the, the board want to provide any feedback at this time as to which way they are leaning? Or do you want to bring this up as an action item and vote on it at that time? Is it possible for the board, I'm just making sure that I follow protocol out here, we can give thumbs up to one of the options at this point in time and then come back and vote on that option. You would want, you would want specific guidance on which option we are picking at this point in time, right? Is that what that is? Okay. Can that come after two weeks as an action item? Or do we make that choice right now so that you have the time to come forth with a specific? Okay, okay. So, with that discussion that is taking place, option one, board members' thumbs up, option one. Okay. Option three? Okay. Option two? Okay. I have one board member for option one, four board members for option three, and one board member for option two. So, it's option three at this time. Thank you again. So, that's the recommendation that will come in front of the board. And this provides us, and it's, again, I'm going to circle back. It's not that we don't want option one. Thank you for the work that you guys did. But there is a lot of unknown here going into this year. Now, after the first year, we will have a better idea how this plan is performing. So, maybe a year's time, we can come back and visit and see if we want to go with some type of plan like option one. But at this time, there are so many unknowns, not having to know the other budget impacts that are going to take place. Thank you so much, guys. This is exciting work for the district. Any way you get to see it, it's exciting. Thank you. And that all starts with you guys and the committee recommendation. So, and thank you for the board members too, especially Director Nelson and Director Juergensen for you guys pushed this. Thank you. Oh, you wanna make a comment? Come back, yeah.
Just one more comment. I'm not sure if any one of us mentioned, but Kaiser is known along the city. They do represent two other districts, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. But the District 11 plan will be unique and unicorn compared to any of the other districts. So, we will get the better deal even from the other districts. So, if we, if it so happened to steal a couple more employees or some, or some more families, then you know why.
Great. Yeah, that's great. Appreciate your feedback. Thank you, sir. We can pull that down. Thank you. And thank you. Thank you for staying a little bit later than what was necessary for the teachers and staff. At least you don't have students tomorrow. I think you guys still have to show up to work. Moving on to Project LC, which is research projects, studies, and experiments.
We're kinda getting pretty late in the, we'll see. Go ahead.
Thank you Superintendent Gall, President Malpakam, members of the board. Policy LC Research Projects Studies Experiments and Surveys is being introduced with revisions to practice, clarifying language and division title. This policy was introduced at the February 8th board meeting and held, held over to accommodate additional information presented at the March 1st work session. The revisions include updating the Educational Data and Support Services Department to education insights. There are also new additions to language related to research projects being understandable and written in stakeholder-friendly language, and to research projects being supported by subject matter experts. The policy also includes expanded clarity on parent guardian consent for research projects and surveys, and board processes for permitting opt-out options where applicable.
Thank you. So, let me open it up for board conversation here. I think Director Nelson, you were, you were instrumental in, were you involved in any of those policy revisions that we have in place? Go ahead.
So, what you just referenced, Dr. X, that was on the draft that is titled LC Redlined or LC Clean, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, then I can speak to LC Data Share if you would like me to, or were you planning to?
I'll, I'll let you speak to that.
Okay.
Can we pull up LC Data Share, the thing on the screen?
So, after our work session last week on surveys, the board came to realize that there maybe needed to be a few more edits on this policy, such as that there are organizations that we purchase these surveys from, like the 5E survey through the University of Chicago, for example, that have access to the data because they help to, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Kate, they help to aggregate the data afterwards. And so, some of their researchers have access to the information. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we just realized that when we are informing parents of the survey and all of the content questions, that it would be good to also let them know that there are other organizations besides District 11 that will have access to this data. So, that's what you're seeing on the document titled Parents Receive Data. So, then there's also, basically, anything that's in red is new information. I do wanna address a public comment that was made on number two about mental and psychological problems potentially embarrassing to the student or his family. That's not new language. That has been in this policy before this board was in place. So, that has been district policy. I'm, I'm not sure where that came from, but I, I did wanna address that that's not anything new that we're trying to slip in. The other important piece that is different on this policy is that we're asking all data that's collected on an identifiable student. So, the Panorama survey is not anonymous. There will now be a record of how students answer those questions and also teachers fill out surveys on every student. So, we want that information provided to parents. We believe that it's only fair or for transparency purposes and that these are their children, that we are able to offer that information to the parents on how their students answered those surveys. And I guess I, I did wanna follow up on a, I don't know if now would be the time. It's, it's survey relevant, but not policy relevant. Just that the Panorama survey questions, it has a, a spot for the teacher version of the questions, but you can't actually see what they are. So, could we at some point get those questions loaded so that parents can see what teachers are answering about their students, if we could get that on the, the website? So, I think that kind of addresses everything. It's pretty self-explanatory. Anything in red is brand new from, since last week's work session.
Okay. So, what has been added, let's go step by step quickly. Organizations that have access to the data. So, this is when researchers come and present the survey, the purpose of the survey, they also provide which organizations, outside organizations have access to the data. Adding that statement, is there any concern or talk about that at this point in time? Are we good with that, additional of that language?
Organizations that have access to the data informing.
Okay. I don't see any concerns about that. That's okay. And then what was added out there, the red version in that same, at the end of the paragraph, all data collected on an identifiable student, which would be the Panorama survey. So, this came out of the work session last week, when it was mentioned that we have been collecting this information about, from students for the last five years, about each and every student in third to 12th grade.
Well, kindergarten, if you count that the teacher fills out a survey on every student.
I'm just talking about the parent part of it, the student part of it. The student part of it, which is being collected from third to 12th grade for the last five years, this information has not been shared with the parents themselves. Okay. So, what this language does is that the information that the district collects as a survey on an identifiable student, a name attached with it, with a student, that information has to be shared in a timely manner with the parent guardians. Any concerns with that? Anybody that's not interested in? Okay. I think Director Ott has a concern about that. Director Ott.
Thank you. My, yes, a concern. As soon as the results are available, is not, I, I think I'd prefer your wording, President Malpakam, sort of in a timely fashion or some such.
Yeah.
Because as soon as the results are available, well, they just, you know, cross Dr. Colicky's desk is avail, and they're, they're, are they available? You know, are they, my concern is that that, that, that people can come to us and say, you did not get them to me in a, well, in a timely fashion, as soon as they were available. Also, I think it's worth noting that if, if we, what are, what, how much work is that going to create for staff to turn around and have to get that back to everybody? So, that's a question.
Okay, maybe you can answer that question.
I, I would just, I think our recommendation is we would like to adopt it going forward or, you know, the results of this year. If there's some requests to go backwards since the beginning.
No, no, no. It's not going backwards. It's just going forwards. Yeah. We're not asking you to go five years back and present.
Okay, good. That's good. That's good. I don't believe it'll be a problem because we have ways of doing this with our STAR testing data as well. So, there'll be, there'll be an avenue through, through Power School that we can send it. Parents do have to sign up for that and opt into that. And we're actually testing, field testing that now with our STAR results. And that's going to also be the way that we, that we transport CMAS results out to families. So, there is an avenue to be able to do that. And I'll work with, with Dr. Schulte and, and the director Skates to look at the type of report that comes out of Panorama and then be able to attach it to that same mechanism.
Okay. Follow-up question. Do you think that if the, well, I, I don't know that I could agree with teacher, what teachers are saying about students being available to parents. I think that's going to create some significant self-centre-ship from staff, which may or may not benefit the system. But if, another question would be, if students know that the data's going to be shared with their parents, can we anticipate that we will get as honest of answers?
I think that's a reasonable, that is a known effect, to know that who's, who's gonna be reading the, reading the results. Called the Hawthorne Effect, basically the, the effect of, sorry to get geeky on you.
No, that's alright.
Yeah, the, the effect of who's, who's giving the survey, how it can have an effect on the survey taker. That's certainly well-known.
Yeah. Okay. Just, thank you for addressing that.
Well, as an extension, if students know that the teachers are going to be reading that survey, they could have the same concern.
Absolutely.
Hey, my teacher is going to be reading it, so I gotta be careful about answering it. So, I don't know if it achieves anything on that. Director Nelson, the concern out there was, as soon as the results are available, are you comfortable changing that language as, in a timely manner, or by the end of the year, by the end of the year? Like, by the end of that academic year where, I'll come to you, Director.
Yep. I struggled with how to word that, I'll admit. I just don't want it to turn into that a survey's given in like October and then you don't get it to the parents until end, until May. Like, that, that was where, okay, if they have the data available, then they should be able to push it out to the, to the families. So, that was why I chose that language, thinking if it's available, then, you know, we're working with it. Why can't we then also transfer it to families?
Well, the concern there was this Panorama survey is given twice a year, once in, once in October and once in March.
Right. So, but we would say then that it's not conclusive until both have been given. So, I think it still meets that criteria of it's technically not available until it's done both times, because it is a.
Okay. So, can you just add? Let's, you know, what would be a, what would be a timely turnaround for this result? You know, can you play around with that? The concern here, out here, is that we don't want to wait a significant amount of time. But understanding the constraints that you face, we don't want to overload you either. But all we are asking is that in a timely manner, turn it around, but don't drag your feet.
Absolutely. Yeah, that. I, I think it should just be by the completion of the school year. This is an annual type of survey. Well, we take it twice, but we would, we, we reported it at the work session to provide the board the context of what we were seeing and the value of the survey. The survey itself, much like Five Essentials, is meant to be a trend information for us to see what is happening on how students feel about their school experience according to those attributes. And so, it, my recommendation to the board would be to have, if we're writing one specifically on this survey, it would be by the end of the year. It would be, it is conclusive of the, the way the student feels about their experience at school. If, if I think about the timeline of Panorama, which will be opening, it will be naturally towards the end of the year anyway, because the second window closes, closes in April, I believe. So, and then it takes, takes a little bit to, to process those and then to get them out. So.
Director Nelson.
I'll just say that we need to zoom out a little bit. We're, we're not writing policy tailored to a specific survey. We're writing policy to guide how we use surveys. So, we are referencing Panorama, because that's something we're doing right now. But in the future, what if the district wants to bring in a survey that isn't twice a year? They give it in October, but now language says that they just have to get it to the parents by the end of the year. So, I guess I would challenge that I don't want it to be by the end of the year, because if something's done in October, then it should not be given in May. The results get given to the parents in May. But.
Okay. Maybe we can phrase that sentence, all data collected on an identifiable, all survey data, all completed survey data, maybe we put that word, completed survey data collected on an identifiable student must be presented to the parent guardians.
Within the end of the quarter of its completion.
Okay.
Can you give me a quarter to complete it?
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, quarter semester. Well, yeah.
Oh, the semester. Oh, the semester. So that, that is timely enough. You know, yeah. So that means completed survey data would be, survey like a panorama, you wait till both are completed before we give it. Okay. Is that agreeable to you? We got to move on. Can you pull the thing up next? What do we have out there?
No.
Oh, you've got some concerns? Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Okay. My concern, okay, we get the data, when does the teacher begin to use it?
It will.
Huh? So when, when does the teacher, if I get the data, when does the teacher use it?
It's after.
Okay. Let, let that, yeah.
I will base this on history with 5E because Panorama will probably follow that same type of model. We generally build that into the symposium for planning, so that's the end of May. And then that, that planning is forward-thinking into the next ball.
So, so me, if I'm the parent, I'd want to know what you're using on my child prior to you doing it, not after you've done it.
Correct.
And then what if, what if you had a situation in the child that raises alarms in that survey? Are you going to wait to the end of the year to tell the parent, hey, you know, by the way we had the survey and, and, you know, he wanted to kill himself? I mean, there, there's things are going to be in there, pop up, and they'll use them when they feel it's needed, right? So I feel, before you use anything on my child, you need to talk to me. Well, I think we're forgetting, we don't serve the state, we don't serve the county, we don't serve the 11, we serve the parents. So in my opinion, whatever we have to do to make sure the parent is comfortable, then we just got to do it.
Are you suggesting a revision to this sentence right here?
Yeah.
Right now, we have
It's just open-ended.
Well, right now, we have all survey data collected on an, all completed survey data collected on an identifiable student must be presented to the parent guardian by the conclusion of the semester or something like that, by the end of the semester.
Or if, if there's a date, when they, they decide to use this stuff, then they should, the parents should know. I don't know when the, when the teacher, if they are going to use it or not. But if they're going to use it in April, or at least by, before April, let me know what you're doing. Because that's my child. If you're going to use it in whenever, okay, then I'm okay with it. When you're getting ready to use it, let me know. Otherwise, don't use it.
Okay. So now we are, again, we are going into the nitty-gritty details of policy. So all completed survey data collected on an identifiable student must be presented to the parent guardians when it is available to the district staff?
Or before, before the staff uses the data on the child.
Okay.
Right? I mean, so we don't know, that could be, they're not going to use it for a month or two months or three months, right? So before you use it on the child, if you're going to use it for anything, you should notify the parent.
Okay. So we still have several items on the agenda for this, so how, do you guys want to, we are going to be going deep into it, we may have to bring this up at next week's work session. Okay? Are, are there still concerns about any other wordings in this policy? Political or religious affiliations, is, you know, or anything else that's out there?
No.
Under number three, topics that infringe on student privacy.
Okay.
That's too vague.
Okay. Well, do you have any feedback on that, Director Nelson? I would assume that topics that infringe on student privacy would be something that violates FERPA? Is that what we are talking about out here? Anything that violates FERPA policy? Anybody could talk about that?
Yeah, that would be our, that would be our working definition.
Okay. Okay. Is that satisfactory for you, Director?
Then we should probably put that in there.
Okay. But is there anything more that you are concerned about, Director Nelson, out there? That would go over and beyond what is out there? Or do we want to circle back? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I guess when you look at it in the context of, it's bullet point three, sex behavior and attitudes, or topics that infringe on student privacy, I mean, I feel like if you're, if you're asking questions that someone would consider private, then we should be getting parent consent. So I guess re, can you repeat back what you just suggested, Dr. Mopakam?
Rewind button. Well, what I was asking
Or is this one that, like, if we have to bring this back to work session anyways?
Oh, that one, that part of it. I'm just asking if we are
Oh, the FERPA part.
Yeah, the FERPA part. Anything that violates student privacy would be anything that violates FERPA. Okay? You want, I don't know all the things that go into violating the FERPA.
Yeah.
I know that that is, you know?
So if we're, did we already decide this is going to have to come at the work session next week?
We are not going to, unless the board wants this to return to the policy committee, we can bring it back to the work session.
No, that's not, oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah. It comes back to the work session. If we want to go and work on the language that is out there, and if you pull it further down, I want to see what other
I mean, I'm inclined to say that's fine, to switch out that language, saying, or violates FERPA. I just don't know anything about FERPA.
Okay. Okay. And then, yeah.
I shouldn't say I don't know anything.
Neither do I.
My knowledge is limited.
Okay. Okay. And then we have any other concerns that is, that organizations that have access to the data was added before? Any concerns about the getting the no-use survey as part of it? Okay. So there is none concerns about that, and if the above-listed topics are not included in the survey questions, any other, the concerns out there? You have concerns? Okay. Director Ott.
I'm just going to mention again that the survey, I realize you want this to be general about all surveys. And we had some speakers tonight to the Healthy Kids for Colorado survey. And we talk about parents' choice. Again, if I'm a parent who wants my kid to take that survey, because I believe that it benefits our community, then you've taken that away from me by not even letting this happen. That's, that's my understanding of how this is, where this is going. And I just want to draw your attention again to, we heard from the county coroner pleading us and to, well, maybe not pleading, but he is saying this is a good idea for students to take this survey. And it can make a difference. And people say it has nothing to do with, with the district and things like that, but it does. It keeps students alive. He saw with this information and working with the other community partners, they reduced suicide rates in El Paso County. And we can help impact that. But this survey, as I understand it, won't let us do that. And so in a way, we can talk about this, I'll help shape it the best I can, but I cannot support this policy, as is without the board ability to easily allow something like the Healthy Kids Colorado survey. Thank you.
Director Nelson.
So I think there's two points that we need to just separate for a second here. If we look at the policy, that language of a majority of the board may give permission to conduct such surveys as an opt-out option to families if the above-listed topics are not included in survey questions. So that's saying if the above-listed topics are in a survey, then you have to get consent. It's not saying that you can't offer the survey in the district. It's saying that written consent from a parent has to be provided if you're going to ask a minor if they're performing illegal or self-incriminating behaviors. Now, the second point that I think you're speaking to about the Colorado Healthy Kids survey, last week at the work session, we were kind of at a stalemate where we didn't really reach a conclusion on whether we, we as a district would be giving that survey. So I don't know if we want to have that conversation again now with having another board member here that could possibly break the tie, or he could just continue the tie. But I'll let that be a decision, I don't know.
Okay. So right now, what, yeah, I'll come to you. So the way the survey, the way the policy itself is worded, it doesn't take the option away of the Colorado Healthy Kids survey. It is, because it's containing topics that pertains to the first six or seven that's listed above, it has to come to the board and the board has to provide that option out there. Is that what I'm
No. That language would say the board, that language would say the board can't give the Healthy Kids survey as an opt-out option.
Opt-out. It can give, the board can give it as an opt-in?
Yes.
Okay.
So if that's where you're struggling, then, then yes, we, we would need to remove that red wording there. And it would free up the board, the majority of the board, to give permission to give surveys. I mean, it would be, it would depend how you interpret it. Would you say that the Healthy Kids survey is in regards to the experience of a student in District 11? I don't, I, I wouldn't say so. So anyways, I
So right now, it just depends on, Director Ott, I mean, are you talking about giving Colorado Healthy Kids survey as an opt-in or an opt-out? Thank you. Director.
Thank you. I, I would prefer, and I will, I will continue to prefer that it be an opt-out survey.
Okay.
Students, we know that opting in reduces the information so significantly that we will not get good data. And then it's pretty useless. In general, I'm also going to make one more observation while I have the mic. This, this continual coming back to the board, having to decide surveys and such, it's really micromanaging our superintendent, too. The superintendent and our staff need to have input from our students. And that's what the Panorama survey and the Five Essentials are about. And so we can micromanage, sure, but I personally don't think it's a good idea. And so I think that when you go to public school, yes, parents have rights, children have rights, children have voices, and we need to learn from them because no matter what, they're the ones experiencing this. And so their feedback is what we need. And we are, we are, again, restricting the information, we're choosing to not pay attention to it because we're not even going to ask for it in many situations. Thank you.
Director Chikens.
I know I was absent last week, I have some thoughts. I, my thoughts on Panorama and 5E are that we can use them. Panorama with SEL input is valuable if we actually use the data, which I think was a lot of our concerns in, in the last meeting as I watched it. You know, what good is a survey if you, I mean, I survey my clients, if I don't take that data and do something with it, what was the point of me doing it and making them take the time for it? The other piece that I think, so Panorama and 5E, I'm, I'm fine with where we're coming to that being an opt-out. For the Healthy Kids School survey, I know we mentioned our coroner giving us a letter today. I, if, if it's something that we are taking away instructional time, I actually reflect on what Mr. Goll said earlier tonight, where we are filling a gap in our needs of our community that we are yet, should not be doing. We, we're tasked with, you know, doing this or doing that. Well, who's going to pick up the slack? Oh, education will. Okay, well, now we need this thing. Oh, who's going to pick up that slack? Education will. And if this is data that the community wants to use on our kids, then let's have El Paso County Health, the State Board of Health administer this Healthy Kids School survey. Make it a QR code, make them solicit the general public, and they can do it. Because it's taking away instructional time from our classroom, it's taking away money from us, I don't know how much money we make on it, or how much money we're given as a grant, as somebody mentioned. But, you know, these, these questions don't have anything to do with academics. Question 24, have you ever touched or grabbed or pinched somebody in a sexual way? 25, have you ever been physically forced to have sexual intercourse when you did not want to? 26, have you ever forced someone to have sex with you when you knew they did not want to? This has nothing to do with the educational program of our district, which is what D11's Board Operating Manual says. We are responsible for the educational program of this district. It has nothing to do with emotional questions like this that just distract our, us from the mission at hand. And so that's, I'm not mincing words, I'm just trying to say. And the other thing is just that we're getting bogged down in all this policy. What is the intent of this policy? It's to make parents aware of how we're using data and to let our, our staff and buildings use the data appropriately. The end. How do we make that clear and concise in policy and be done? And let them, as Mr. Director Ott said, stop micromanaging everything. What's the intent of the policy? We want parents to be prioritized here with data that we're collecting from their students. How are the schools going to use it? How is the community going to use it? And how are we keeping track of the data? One, two, three, check, mark, done. It's just, this is, you know, it's 10:45. And this is, we've already had a work session on it. What's the intent of this policy? Make that intent known and then let our superintendent and his team run, run what we want it to run.
Director Loma.
So this, the survey, how long have we been doing it? 2019, you said? 2018? A few years, right? Well, there's a number of them. I know the, the one from the states every other year, and you have the Panoramas, whatever. We've been doing that for how long? Five years? Has it helped?
I can't, I can't speak to that. I'd have to find out.
Yeah, well, our, our scores haven't, haven't done good. So I'm only, we're here to educate.
We had this commentary at the work session on whether or not the data helps. We have the team that we believe, with the support of the board and the board priorities, to take the data that we have to move this district in the new direction. So it, I, I don't want to ask Dr. Colicky to opine on data outside of his specialty on whether or not it has helped or not helped.
Well, my point was rhetorical.
We believe strongly in the need for us to be able to evaluate the social-emotional level of our students. Those five attributes I think that Panorama uses are great. If the board doesn't like the results when we present them at the end of the year, the district will take on, at board direction, the exploration of other SEL-based surveys if that is the will of the board. At this point, though, the district needs to continue with the processes that they have in place for us to get the data back, for us to continue on the USIPS, of which we are now at 17 and trying to reduce that number. So I would really like for us to wrap this up and allow the district to get back to work.
Well, my, my question was rhetorical. I know the answer.
I know it was rhetorical, but again, to the comments that have been made, we're at almost 11 o'clock at night and we still have several items to get through.
Well, my point is this is
And it's frustrating for my team that has been here all evening, and we're just going back to square one on a policy item. So actually, Director Loma, in support of other initiatives, are we a policy-driven board or are we a work-driven board?
Correct. But I would get to my point, because from this data, if somebody said that this will prevent suicide, made a big old fanfare, this will, this will do this, this will do that, and I don't know if there's any cause and effect, if that, if that's just another story for hyperbole, or what is that? I don't think this survey will, will lower suicides.
And, and it is not our intent that we use them that way. I have used the Panorama survey several times in just the last week as that data became
Yeah. My, my point is, I just wanted to address that, that topic, because that's, because they're going to, people say, "Oh, man, the board doesn't care about suicides." This has nothing to do with that.
No. I think they were referring to the Colorado Healthy Kids survey for the suicide. I don't think Panorama survey gets to that. Maybe there are some
I don't think any of these surveys do.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. You want to talk? Director Nelson.
I'm going to recommend that the board just call this, like, we give our thumbs. I mean, we've had this policy for weeks now. There's very little that has changed since last week. The gist of the policy, by me adding if the above-listed topics are not included in survey questions, doesn't change the gist of the policy. Like, that's, that's just kind of reinforcing what was already there. The idea of getting parent consent, that's been in this policy, policy since before I was on the board. So I'm going to turn to my fellow board members and ask you all to just make the call. If we want Mr. X to change the language above that all data collected on an identifiable student must be presented to the parents or guardians within the semester that it's available, can we just say that's what we want to do and we move forward and let's move this on to action or consent or whatever? Like, I appreciate that Dr. Ott has Like, I appreciate that Dr. Ott has concerns, but like I said, we've had this policy for weeks now, and these minor edits have not changed the gist of, of what her concerns are that she's bringing up now tonight.
Any other final thoughts or comments before we talk about it? So the only language revision, Mr. Dalgo, if you pull it up, that we are talking about at this time is, as soon as the results are available, we can work on that language. Organizations that have access to data is not a problem. Are there, the religious affiliation's not a problem.
We already did all this.
What's that?
We already did all that.
Okay. The topics that infringe on student privacy, is there any, this, or we are going to vote on it as it is right now, giving a thumbs up to move it to action?
If you want to say the FERPA thing, that's fine.
Okay. So let's look at that language and then come back on that. Does the board want this to come as a work session, or can it come as an action item two weeks from now?
Action, thumbs up for action.
Thumbs up for action? Okay. Okay. I have four thumbs up to move it to action. Okay. Thank you. To the community, all the surveys itself, the Healthy Kids Survey for the middle school, high school, Five Essential Survey, Panorama Survey, all the surveys are attached out there on board docs. You can go and take a look at it yourself and see if the questions out there are appropriate for your child to answer. Right now, the way it's worded is the Five Essential Survey and the Panorama Survey are going to be opt-out surveys for our district. Parents have to opt out of those if they want to. Healthy Kids Survey, on the other hand, because of the intrusive nature of the questions that are being asked, even though it may decrease the number of student, student participation out there, some of the questions that are asked, if I change one word in that, in that survey, and this is what I thought about that, instead of calling it Healthy Kids Survey, I call this Healthy Staff Survey and ask our staff to take the survey, I don't know how many of our staff members would be willing to take that survey as it is out there, right, right there. And if I say, this is something that our staff want to take, and, and if I, one more thing I would add on this. Yeah, I, I did talk to legal counsel about this, and legal, and I asked if I give the survey as a Healthy Staff Survey with that past muster, and our legal counsel said that, that probably would not. You would have to add several restrictions on top of it before you give it to our staff to take the survey. So that's the concern that is out there. And now we are asking our minors, 10, 11, 12-year-olds. Okay? And when Director Ott, at the work session, she talked about this as, you know, choosing ignorance. As a father, I'm choosing to protect the innocence of our children. Okay? That's my choice that I'm making. Now, if parents want to opt into the survey, they can still do. It's parent voice out there. 10, 11, 12, 13-year-olds, we can't be providing, when parents are coming, we are trying to build trust and transparency. Some parents would be so busy with their work that they may not have checked their email. And then we tell them we are taking their kids into our schools, and then we are going to give the survey, and the parent finds out at the end of the week, and we say tough luck, we, you know, given this survey about the kids. And now we are asking questions about, have you been, all kinds of sensitive questions.
Doctor Malpakum, I just want to, I just want to point out that we, as a board, have not come to a conclusion on whether we're even offering the Healthy Kids Survey, so...
But all the survey data is available out there. The community can go and check out the survey questions themselves. I put the censored version of the survey is there, the standard version of the survey is there. There was a time in 2019, the standard version was given, 2021, the censored version was given. All the survey data is available out there.
Okay.
Director.
Thank you. I'd like to move on, but first, I think we have to pay attention. Our operating manual says that if we are not...
I got it.
You, you got it?
I got it.
11 o'clock.
Okay.
Ticking.
So with that, moving on, we do have to make a motion to extend the board meeting past 11 o'clock, according to our operating manual. Do you, there are two options out here. One, we can push the rest of the policies to a future board meeting, okay? And come back at that point in time? Or do you want to have this conversation at this point in time with Policy FF, Policy G, there are two more policies, and the Whistleboard Policy may take a little bit longer time. That's a new policy that's coming in front of the board. So my suggestion might be to push these policies for a future, future tabled us out there. Is that okay with you, Dr. X?
It is okay with Dr. X.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Is that the will of the board to table it? By thumbs up. Okay. I got, I got that. So, so let's make a motion, Director Jorgensen, to, to table the three policies that are in there, read them out by name, to the next board meeting.
I do. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but there is a policy that we do need to address. It is time-sensitive.
Okay. Which one?
GCFA.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Policy GCFA, hiring of instructional staff.
Okay, let's, let's postpone. Let's extend the time, make a motion to extend the time. Is 15 minutes okay for that discussion? You think it's going to take more than that? Okay. Okay, let's extend till 11:30. Make a motion to extend to 11:30.
I move that the Board of Education extend this evening's meeting until 11:30.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Can you dismiss your staff, Mr. Goll?
I'll wait till you take the motion.
Yep, go ahead.
Nay.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You have the minutes for a time-sensitive policy.
And staff, other than Dr. X, you guys can go home at 11:00. And girls.
Policy GCFA, hiring of instructional staff, portability of non-probationary status is being introduced for adoption by the Board of Education. This policy is a new policy and addresses the portability of non-probationary status of new hires to the district. This, the policy is recommended by CASB, and it aligns with emerging state law. Policy GCFA provides clear guidance to teacher applicants for the process of notifying the district that they are choosing and meet the requirements to exercise their right under state law for portability of their non-probationary employment status.
Okay. And the reason that this is time-sensitive?
I will allow Director Nash to come speak to that, Director of Educator Effectiveness.
It has to do with our recruiting season, but we need to adjust some language in our teacher application process that references the policy and is very clear about our timelines. And so we'd like to have that in as now we're ramping up to start hiring staff.
Thank you. Board members, this is a new policy. You've looked at the policy. Any concerns, questions that you have on this policy? Director Ott.
Thank you. I noticed that the teachers must request portability within 14 days of the conditional job offer. But what's the district's timeline for letting them know that their, I wrote NP, non-portability status is granted or not?
So technically, if they just provide to us their last two years of effective evaluations and the documentation that they held non-probationary status while those evaluations were completed, then we must, under state law, extend to them portability of their non-probationary status. So we're not reviewing to say, do we agree? We're just saying, do you have the two years? And do you have documentation that you held non-probationary status during those evaluations? It's a very quick minutes, once we have the information.
So they would know within that two weeks, certainly?
Typically, as soon as they hand it to us.
Oh, very good. Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Director Nelson.
Just seeing there are no other comments or questions, I would propose we kick this to consent. I don't have any questions.
Oh, that's what you were going to do? Okay, that, that's my job. I think I'm going to ask that.
Trying to move this along. Sorry.
I thought you had a question.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Do we want to move this to consent? Okay. So this moves to consent, and with that, so this would come into weeks as a consent item. So, and, yeah, please make a motion to table the other two items until next week.
Next board meeting?
Next board meeting.
I move that the Board of Education table non-action items, number three, Policy FF, and number four, Policy GBC, until the next board meeting on March 22nd, 2023.
Point of order?
Thank you.
Point of order, we can only table something when it has been discussed, and because we have not discussed these items, it would be motion to postpone till next...
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Then I move to postpone these items, number three, Policy FF, and number four, Policy GBC, until the March 22nd, 2023 board meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that correction.
I need a second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So the two policies, Policy FF and Policy GBC, will be postponed until the next board meeting. Future agenda item request, are there any at this time?
No.
Okay, seeing calendar review, there is going to be a work session next week, small work, as far as I know, work session...
We'll do an executive session on the front end. And then we'll be doing a transportation plan update in the work session for the board and community.
Okay. So plan on it, it's scheduled starting at 4:00. That's what we will do, starting at 4:00 on March 15. I will circle back with you and provide you, or Mr. Dalgo will provide you the exact timing on the work session and the executive session. March 22nd, we have a regular board meeting starting at 5:30. We already talked about there will be an executive session that day, starting at 4:00 with IBB conversations. And John McCarron also requested to be there for executive session on a different subject matter. May I have a motion?
No, I, I need to, I need to make a, a small statement, because this is recorded and everybody needs to be able to hear it.
Oh, I can see it.
Yeah. So I just want to refocus for folks that are watching from afar, and for those who do attend, and I hope that the folks who do attend and leave early, go back and review the rest of what happens during the evening. I need to give a shout out to our security team, David and Brian specifically, and other members in the hallway. Tensions have been high in the district for some time, but at a, what I had thought would be a professional and within the expected decorum of how adults should be handling clearly contentious issues. And I want to frame this through what I see and I celebrate in our students, particularly the students that come forward to express their opinions, whether they align with certain adult opinions or not. A week ago, we had students come and have, and held a very peaceful protest on some of the challenges that we're dealing with right now. And those students, I went outside and asked them if they'd like some time with the superintendent and, and my staff, and they obliged, and we came in for about a half an hour and met with a dozen of them. I had to forcibly ask adults and non-students to not participate in that event, and I could see that they were visibly upset that I asked them to not participate. I am here solely for the purpose of students, all students, no matter what color, no matter what creed, no matter what belief, no matter what place of origin, and no matter what they choose to do with the rest of their lives. It was a wonderful conversation that we had, and we were in receive mode. And then at the end of that day, we went out, and again, thanks to our building staff, and we went and cleaned out the, the signage, and we found that the sign had been vandalized. And so I was disappointed in the students, but then I reached out to one of the students that I know that was at the center of bringing some of that voice here to the, to the district. And we provided him with information and showed some video evidence, and that student did the right thing. And he stood up for what he believed in by coming to protest and make his voice be heard, or their voice, I should say. And then actually, I helped identify the individuals who vandalized that piece of, of our property. That is now in law enforcement hands. What we saw tonight was a blatant disregard by adults for pure decorum of how we expect to operate professionally. What people don't know, because they don't see on the camera, is that both Brian and David were actively, almost tackling a gentleman here, I believe his name was Bruce, who after public comment, comes fast-paced up to the board. If you don't know your history, and you all do, you are at most risk when you think you are not at risk. And for me, I am shaken by the thought that, and I asked Mr. Bruce for a meeting, but that Mr. Bruce almost went down on camera, tackled by two grown adult men. Because people believe that their point of view is more important than the decorum and the protocols that we set up such that everybody's opinion is valued. Every one opinion is valued. We allow sign-ups starting at 9:00 a.m. People come in here at 9:00. We will look, as a board, to consider if we should be having electronic options where we can take in people's opinion, and maybe they can't make comment. Clearly, there is more opinion than the time allows for. It is after 11:00, and people have left dissatisfied, dissatisfied with their ability to share their opinion. And yet, only one member came forward in that hour and celebrated the students that were here today because they happen to be a part of that, that, that building community. Our students are setting the example. We had a student who won an award for state-level competition, who then turned around and politely and professionally shared her dissatisfaction with some opinions and some policy opportunities. And then she sat and she attended the rest of the evening and left quietly without any disruption. I will be asking the security team to tighten down these board meetings. They have to be safe. They have to be safe for students first. We have students in our board meetings, and I'm not confident that it's safe to be in here in the way that adults are choosing to discuss the challenges that they have with very personal opinions about certain situations. The protest today, held by adults, was embarrassing compared to the protest that was held last week by students. We are a student-focused district. If you don't know what to do, ask a student. They will set the standard for you. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that the Board of Education...
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.